We'll call the meeting to order. Start with the prayer. Dear God, tonight as the session opens, we pray for your presence will be before us and for everyone who serves the decision-making process in our city. We pray for the direction which will lead our city to be strong and unified. May we continue the legacy of our founders. May we be granted this day of wisdom to make decisions which will be good for our city. We also pray for your special blessing for all those who are working to transform our city to make it a better place to live and work. Amen. Pledge of allegiance? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Roll call.
Council Noon.
Here.
Council Rourke.
Here.
Council Samaras.
Here.
Council Chau.
Here.
Council Conway.
Here.
Council Drinkwater.
Here.
Council Elliott.
Here.
Mayor Leahy.
Here.
Council Mercier.
Here.
Nine present.
City Clerk portion, need a motion to accept and place on file.
Salute Mr. Mayor.
Sure, by Council Elliott, second by Council Noon. Auditor's business. Any questions on the communication from the auditor? If not, I need a motion to accept and place on file.
So moved.
By Council Elliott, second by Council Samaras. Next, we're going to take out of order 5.2. I need a motion to take out of order by... So, okay, so we're into 5:00. Enough 7 o'clock, we'll go to communication from the city manager. Any questions on response A, status of the need program? Council Rourke.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To you, too, Mayor. So, I read the report, and there's 85 current properties now?
That they've put together a list of that, and I think that represents about a dozen landlords who own those total number of properties.
You know, I mean, in the past week, is there any research done if they're the same landlords from last time, from a couple of years ago?
I think Mr. Slagel's here. I think a couple of years ago, about half of them sold their property. Maybe you can address whether some of these are the same ones again?
A couple of them are, in fact, the same landlords that we had problems with before. But a lot of them are unfortunately the next round of landlords who are having problems with, who weren't in the last... The bulk of them are landlords that weren't in the last...
And one of them on Shaw Street, I think it was 25 or 27, was that a repeat from a few weeks ago?
That property, I believe, is a repeat landlord, yes.
So, is there, is it now, because they're repeat offenders, is there something that can be done to, not as punishment, but, you know, he went through this before, you know, he warned, and I guess he took care of the problems, right? But now we're back here again in the same spot?
Right. So, the idea is that they're on a zero tolerance policy, which means they no longer get warnings, that when there's a violation at their property, they will be immediately fined, to the full extent that the city can fine them.
So, when inspectors goes in and they need to maybe, you know, shut down a, or condemn a building, you know, turn off power, electricity, it's on the landlord to find housing for their tenants, correct?
Right. So, we, when we shut, when we shut down a building, we require the landlords to put the tenants up. Some landlords don't. In an effort, and we do our best to make sure that they do, but sometimes they just don't. And so, we actually use some CDBG, Community Development Funding, with a grant to CTI for emergency housing. So, if there's a tenant that doesn't get put up for some other, whatever reason by the landlord, we're, we can get them to CTI so they do, they do get emergency housing.
So, in your opinion, is it, is it like an ordinance issue where the fines need to be steeper for violations, or if we have the same people coming back again? Is it, you know, I know we had to have ordinance in place with, you know, monetary fines or fees for violations, right?
Right. And so, we fine to the maximum amount allowed, which is three, up to $300 per day. Typically speaking, we don't fine landlords per day, because it's not, it's not necessarily feasible to get them, to have someone to fine them every day. But when they get into a zero tolerance policy, that's when we start to fine them as much as we possibly can.
You know, and this is, it's a neighborhood issue, right? You know, just, you have properties like this that they cause blight in, you know, and eyesore for, you know, not to mention the tenants that are in the buildings, their safety can be jeopardized, as that was at that address a few weeks ago. So, I think it's a good report. Thank you very much, and hopefully you can work as quick as, I know it's a lot of properties. You know, it's a good case to make for more inspectors, Mr. Slagel, right?
So, we are working very closely with the Police Department and Fire Department to get them the information, so that they can also prepare a list of violations for those properties. And as the report said, within the next couple of weeks, we hope to get the first landlords in, to give them their, the hard truth, which is that we're not going to be their property managers anymore.
Great. We'll be up there on that. Thank you. Thank you.
Council Mercier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a very good report. This was a very good motion by Council Rourke, because we've addressed the need program. Need meaning neighborhood enhancement enforcement directive, and for some time, this program kind of stopped. And when you look at the different areas of the city, and you see people that are not taking an interest in their property, or they don't live in this city, and they're just deriving some sort of a income for themselves, and the heck with the surrounding neighbors who take care of their property. So, this is really a good thing, because this is what the report said. There were eight landlords in the city with the highest level of the greatest complaints. Now, the city inspected 39 of the total properties from only six different landlords. Six different landlords owned 39 percent, 39 total of the problem properties. And because of that, 21 of those properties were sold, offering landlords to better take care of those properties. So, you could have had a blighted property next to you, but because of this need program, it then enhanced and sold off that property to someone that was better able to take care of it. Now, the program is going to resume again. I think this is a good thing to make better neighborhood areas in the city, because your value of your property seems to go down.
This is need to address these landlords that, in large part absentee landlords. Council Mercier just mentioned the statistics. A small group of people own a lot of property, and they neglect them, but they collect the top rents. And that's where it's, it's just wrong, because they're eyesores in the neighborhood. Through you to Mr. Slagel, there's, you identified 83 more properties. What is the timeframe that you will use to address the 83, or to do an inspection? I know there was a, I think it was a SWAT, kind of SWAT team that went there in the past. I presume this is the same approach, but, you know, you drive around the city, and 83 is a big number, but I would, I would submit there's probably more.
Certainly. So, again, the 83 properties were derived from landlord problems, so that you're correct, in that it may not be targeting all the problem properties, but these are the landlords that we're having the largest number of problems with. We anticipate starting the, the program with bringing the landlords into City Hall within two weeks. As the manager mentioned, it's about, I think it's around 12 landlords that comprise these property owners. As for how long it's going to take, we will do like we did in the last round, which is we will immediately require them to schedule multiple inspections with both sanitary code inspectors and health inspectors, along with the fire prevention office, to, in those problems. And we typically like to see those inspections within 30 days of their initial meeting with the city. So, you have 30 days to have our inspectors out at all of your properties that are on this list. And then compliance depends on what we find when we go out to those properties. The vast majority of these properties fail those inspections. And so, then they are fined, and they are told they need to bring their properties into compliance. We are not draconian. We are going to give them time. If they need to get a contractor, they have time to pull the permits. We want them to do that appropriately. So, typically, the last time we did this, it was about a four to six month window after we started the program, before we started to, we completed all of the inspections. That was for 39 properties. So, this is twice as many properties. It's likely to take a little bit longer than that, but it's something certainly we want to have substantially done by the summer.
Sure. Madam Manager.
Thank you. I just want to say, I think it's a great motion and a great program, and it's a great opportunity to hear about it and reinstitute it, and have inspection and enforcement on steroids. I think that is really the goal. So, I appreciate this being brought forward.
Yeah, no, I concur. I like, I like that statement that, you know, we're really, steroids, that these landlords, we shouldn't have to go in and use all these resources to do it. We're going to do it because of the compliance issue, and particularly the impact that has on the neighborhoods, and people keep their property in good condition. So, I guess I'm a little disappointed, the four to six month timeframe, where they should be doing this in a timely manner, but if we can get updates on, on these 83, I think that'd be helpful to let us know, you know, how many violations there were, and, you know, why does it take so long? Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, so now to be, any questions on parking lot around New Courthouse? Council Mercier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's pretty difficult to say that I, I was satisfied with the report, Eric, really. I'm not happy about it. The first scenario, and then there's a second scenario. The reason I brought this up in the very first place was because I was coming into the city council meeting some time ago, and on a particular Tuesday, they were having a meeting, a hearing across in the mayor's reception room, and this man came and said to me, "I live on such and such a street. I have a parcel of land aside of me that I own as well." And there's a, they're doing a development in the area, and the contractor asked if he could park his trucks and vehicles there, just to get it off the main street. And I never charged him a dime. I said, "Sure, go ahead." He's being fined $2,500 for something he's not even doing, but he, he could probably prove that. Here's someone that has a parking lot type thing, a parcel of land, and he's not charging anybody. And then, there's people around the city, specifically Middlesex Street, that have two lots, but because it's owned by a school, it's tax exempt, and they put a fence around it, and we're not able to get anything from it? I don't understand that, because this is what the first scenario says. "If you have an existing parking lot, and you wish to lease out the space to another use or nearby parcel, the city ordinance does not prohibit this." That's not giving me an answer. So, they can do whatever they want?
So, for purposes of operating a parking lot in these districts, and I don't know which parking space you're, which lot you're talking about from the earlier example, but in the downtown mixed-use district and the urban mixed-use district, if you're a private property owner, and you want to lease out your space for a parking lot, and it already has a parking lot there, and you want to lease out spaces, you're allowed to do that. That's the market operating. You can lease out your spaces if there's somebody who wants to lease them from you. If you have a vacant lot that's not a parking lot, then you have to get permission from the city to turn it into a parking lot.
So, can you tell me if people have pulled permits on Middlesex Street to, to allow parking there?
On the, the lots owned by the charter school?
Yes.
Adjacent to Durkin?
Yes.
They have not.
Well, well, according to this, shouldn't they?
They need to pull permits if they, if they want to convert that to a parking lot.
So, please keep me posted and see if they do.
If, we are aware of that property, and if they try to turn it into a parking space without getting the appropriate permits, we will take enforcement against them.
Well, it's amazing that it was vacant all these years, and now they put a fence around it? They're going to put animals in there, or what's happening?
I couldn't speculate. I think you'd have to talk to the charter school about it.
Well, keep up with that, please. Thank you.
Certainly, I will.
Any further discussion on item B? Council Rourke.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, just, the 300 spots that the city needs to provide, has that been decided upon yet? Where they're going to be?
We're talking to the trial court about that. We have some proposals, and I know Diane Trad emailed them today. She's been back and forth with Ms. Chrisley, Crisley?
Chrisley.
Georgia Chrisley, for the trial court, so we'll keep you posted. But we are obligated to provide 300 spaces, so we're looking in the short term, before the garage opens, so.
Thank you.
For any discussion on that. Motion C, MSP sobriety checkpoints. Council Conway.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I want to thank the police chief, Kelly Richardson, and also the deputy Barry Gona, putting this report together. And I think that what we discussed last week, you know, and, and I think in prior weeks, is try to make the city a safer place, and we're talking also the, you know, the downtown area and doing whatever we can to prevent the problems. This here, this information that I did a little bit of reading on, and I saw that, and I've talked to some police officers, and they thought these checkpoints would be an excellent, an excellent way to try to curtail some of the problems, especially individuals coming in on that Friday and Saturday night. And I think that's what's happening. Many of these cases, from what I'm hearing, it's, it's not the people that live in Lowell. It's people that are coming from outside, and all of a sudden, they want to make Lowell their playpen on a, on a Friday and a Saturday night. So, again, I thank you for the report, and I think that I look forward to perhaps increasing those checkpoints, and, and I know the city council certainly is supportive of the police department, so any other thing that we can do to make the city a safer place, I'm sure we're there for them. So, again, thank you, Chief, for the report.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Item D, Historic Walk, Historic Walking Freedom Trail. Any questions on that? Council Conway?
Yeah, thank you. Again, I appreciate the report on this, and I think it's something that's very important. It's a positive. It's a positive spin for the city. And again, I know this was brought up by a constituent that said, "Maybe we can kind of model what might have taken place in, in Boston." And doing some research, we find that, you know, it gives, it gives us an opportunity to showcase the city and all the pluses that we have. And I think it's twofold. It's not only that, but by bringing those people in, we're talking about perhaps using our facilities, restaurants and so forth, and to, and to help with our economic development. I think also what, what it'll help too, is the fact that our students can take advantage of that too. And I realize there's different methods of technology that's used, but I, I think it's important that we put, put this into place, and I think that I want to thank the, the partners, and that, I think, has made the city of Lowell a very strong place in so many different areas, where when we need some help, or we have something that is going to be positive for the city, we have our partners come out and, and join together. So, we look at the, the Lowell Walks, Do It Yourself Lowell Downtown Neighborhood, Middlesex Community College, Lowell Historical Society, National Historic Park, and the University of Massachusetts, coming together to, to discuss this. One quick question I have through you, Mr. Mayor, to the city manager. I see that there's going to be a meeting on Tuesday, the February 25th. Is that something that councilors could go to, if, if that's all right?
Absolutely, Council. Well, we can let the council know the place and the time. Mr. Hayes is here. I don't know if we have the, that available, but we can, we'll certainly get that to you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Mr. Hayes, do we have the exact time and location?
Yes, it is 4 o'clock, and we're just having it in the DPD offices in the Arthur Hammer Conference Room.
The conference room at DPD at 4 o'clock.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Being 7 o'clock, we're going to go to the general public hearings first. So, loan order accelerated repairs on various school buildings, permission to waive the full reading, second reading by title, in city council chamber, loan order to borrow $13,604,154 to pay for the cost of construction repair and/or replacement of boilers, roofs at various schools, including the payment of any architectural engineering or other costs related thereto in the city of Lowell. So, I open up the hearing to all those in favor, and then make a, I make a motion to take 5-2 out of order by Council Drinkwater, second by Council Conway. So, sure, Madam Manager.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and through you to the council. This is obviously on for a public hearing tonight. We have a brief presentation from our architects. I do want to introduce them to the council. CGKV Architects of Cambridge, they have been assigned to us by the MSBA to design these systems that are the subject matter of the loan order tonight. And Leftfield, which is the project manager, who has been assigned, again, these accelerated repair programs are a bit different than, let's say, the high school core program, because the MSBA assigns these architects and project managers who work on these types of projects quite a bit. And so, we have Jason Knutson from the architects, and Lynn Stapleton from Leftfield, the project manager. And just so the council and those at home, it's a brief presentation as to what each, each project is, and how we, how it adds up to the amount of the loan order tonight.
Good evening. I'm Jason Knutson with CGKV Architects. The MSBA accelerated repair program was, began a few years ago to focus on preserving schools that are otherwise in very good shape, and the focus is on energy efficiency, things like boilers, roof replacement, and window and door replacement. In February last year, the city submitted statements of interest to the MSBA for six schools. The Bailey School is scheduled to get boiler and roof replacement, Daley Middle School boiler replacement, Green Alge boiler replacement, McAuliffe boiler, Rogers boiler, and the Sullivan School boiler and roof. The architect and the OPM were assigned in October last year, and we went right into work with our design and explorations. On January 3rd, we submitted our schematic design submissions to the MSBA, and the MSBA board will be voting on those packages in just a couple of days' time, but our informal conversations with MSBA staff indicate that they're all on board for what we intend to do. Just a quick note about my firm. We founded ourselves in 2008. Before that, my partner and I worked together for 10 years at a different firm. Our entire career has been basically focused on public design and construction, special emphasis on renovations of schools and buildings, and since 2010, we've worked on more than two dozen green repair and accelerated repair program projects under the MSBA.
Just quickly, a little bit about Leftfield. We too have been in business since the inception of the MSBA back in 2004. These are a few of our accelerated repair projects that are complete, and a few of our other core projects that we've completed, both high schools and elementary and middle schools, and these are some of our, a few of our current projects. So, we're well-versed with MSBA, a large percentage of our projects are MSBA projects in our firm, but this, this, this year, we have the six Lowell projects.
So, I know you've got a busy evening. We'll try to be really brief through this. We're starting with the boiler projects, and basically, all six school boiler projects are pretty much the same. We're replacing older boilers that were installed in the 90s, not very efficient. Right now, the boilers are on a 100% redundancy, where two boiler, one boiler at each school can do the whole school, but there's another one there as backup. We're changing that up and putting in three smaller boilers, where two of them can do the job for the entire school, and a third one is the redundancy. And they're designed to switch over from one boiler to the next, month to month, depending on the, the heating needs, and to run the boilers at, at different times. We're also doing things like replacing pumps that drive the, the hot water, removing boiler vents and providing new stainless steel flues, replacing things like the air separator and the expansion tank, and the chemical shot feeder. Obviously, we had to connect piping from the new... the new boilers to the main, uh, heating feeds throughout the school, uh, new pneumatic controls, uh, reconfiguring some electrical service and, uh, the gas to the boilers. And then, one thing at each school, because of the amount of money that is being spent on them, we need to pay attention to meeting sort of a minimum standard of accessibility at the school. So, that's included in these projects. And at Bailey, for instance, we are doing some minor upgrades to the women's toilet room, uh, the main level, men's toilet room, and replacing a drinking fountain. That's all part of the MSBA, uh, scope, and they will be participating in paying for that, too. Uh, again, Daley School has two massive boilers, um, the same general scope of replacing all the different components in that boiler room that contribute to the heating of the school. Green Alge, same thing. These are slightly, um, more compact boilers, but again, these are all installed in the early 90s, and they're on their way out. Uh, McAuliffe School, very similar to Green Alge. Uh, Daley, or that's the Rogers, has another really huge, uh, boiler room. The new boilers that go in are going to be significantly smaller, so we've talked to the district about trying to maybe, you know, move all the new equipment into one area so that they can maybe take better advantage of the remainder of the space for storage or things like that. Uh, this is the Sullivan School. They've also got a large pair of boilers, uh, trying to make boilers as interesting as I can here. The two roof projects. Um, we are replacing the, the flat roofs at the Bailey School, not the metal roofs, just the ballasted EPDM roofs, and we're going back with a new system that has a vapor retarder that's missing now to help protect the inside, much more insulation to meet the current energy code, and then a new PVC roof, uh, which, uh, has many benefits. Uh, a challenge here at, at Bailey is going to be where the metal wall panels interact with the, the roof panels we need to, or the, the roof membrane. We need to come up with some clever details on how to deal with that. Um, Sullivan School, again, very similar roof to Bailey in that it's a ballasted EPDM roof. We're removing all the existing roofing systems down to the existing metal roof deck, going back with vapor barrier, uh, lots of insulation, and again, the fully adhered PVC roof. The interesting challenge at Sullivan School is that there are at least 99 things on that roof that either sit on the roof or penetrate the roof, so there'll be a lot of details to deal with, with that building.
Quickly, just a little bit about the MSBA accelerated process. It's, it's similar to the core project in that the same modules or the steps that you go through are the same. However, um, with accelerated repair, it does have an accelerated schedule. Um, the intention is, MSBA gives you the OPM and the designer to save you that time of procurement, and the intention is to get these projects designed and constructed within a year. Um, at that point, MSBA then takes about, uh, 12 months to close you out and pay you totally. Uh, a little bit about our project schedule here, and it's small there, I can't really read it, but we did make, as Jason said, we did make the schematic design submission on January 2nd for all the, the boiler projects, and we expect approval on February 13th for those. We, at that same day, we are making our submission on the roof projects on February 13th, and we expect, uh, MSBA to approve them on April 15th. Um, we will continue with design development with the 60% submissions probably being a little staggered, but we are hoping to make the submissions on the boilers, um, in, um, it's hard to read, and the, um, the March timeframe and completing in, um, in April, so that we can get out to bid. Um, procurement of boilers takes anywhere from eight to 10 weeks, so we're hoping to get out to bid and, uh, be starting with demolition of the existing boilers over the summer when the kids aren't there, and then moving right into construction so that we can be complete before the heating season on October 15th. The roofs will, uh, because the procurement of roofing materials are much quicker to, to get, we'll be able to start the roofs probably sometime at the end of Mar, uh, the end of June, and complete those substantially by the time school starts with maybe trim out and perimeter detailing left to go on whilst, uh, in September. I'm gonna pass this over, 'cause I can't read those words.
Hi, I'm Tim Baker. I'm with Leftfield as well. I'll just quickly go over how each project individually breaks down with the numbers, uh, starting with the, the combined boiler roof projects, uh, at Bailey and Sullivan. Uh, Bailey comes in at 2,608, uh, 608,276, and Sullivan comes out at 4,1,638. Um, as for the four boiler projects, um, the Rogers comes in at 2,135,647, and McAuliffe at 1,498,147. Uh, Daley Middle School is also a boiler project. It comes in at 1,800,00962, uh, sorry, 880,0962, and Green Alge has, uh, comes in at 1,479,484. Giving you the total that was read out earlier. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions, Counsel Samaras?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you. Uh, this may be really a naive question regarding, you're talking about smaller boilers, okay? I understand, you know, the newer boilers, you can build a much better boiler, and it's not the same size, but during, being part of some of the construction sites that we had, it was always looking at a boiler that had the capacity to handle the heating situation. So, you're saying that these are smaller boilers, are these smaller boilers with a larger capacity than what they have, or these smaller boilers with a lesser capacity, but you're using three, I mean, so the, the issue is, you know, when I sat down with the engineers, what I was told was to ensure that the boilers had longevity, they had to have the capacity to handle the job. My concern is the handling of, handling of these jobs, but, you know, based on technology today, I can understand the difference, but I'd really like to know why.
Again, at each of the six schools getting boiler replacements, they are served by two boilers at each school. One of the two can heat the entire school adequately. The second is there as a backup, and you'd maybe run one for a month and then run the other for a month just to maintain, uh, you know, keep the wear and tear even. The current design includes three smaller capacity boilers, two of which are the same capacity of one of the existing boilers. So, those two boilers can heat the entire school by themselves. The third boiler is there in case one of the two primary boilers, uh, fails, that kicks in and picks up the load. Um, you know, if you don't need that much heating, then maybe only one of the boilers will be, be running. If it gets super cold, maybe the third one will kick in, but it allows you, um, uh, more efficient redundancy, but still giving you protection and redundancy.
Okay, so it, it has the capacity, is able to withstand the pressure of time and use?
Yes.
Okay.
It's more energy efficient because it gives you more flexibility of how many boilers need to run based on the temperature. If it's not so cold out, maybe only one runs. If it's colder, two runs. If it's really cold, three runs, but, um, the intention is to continuously cycle them so that they get, all get the same even amount of wear, but, um, the purpose of doing this is basically for energy efficiency.
Thank you. Any other questions? I just had one question from the chair, if you don't mind. Um, I'm just curious about, I think you said the pneumatic controls. Um, it's my understanding that maybe those are being eliminated, so would those be updated with anything more, um, efficient? It, it seems like those could be half the problems in our schools.
Yes, and I'm an architect who knows a little bit about a lot of things. I'm not an HVAC engineer, but, um, generally speaking, all the schools, that most of the devices throughout the school are run with pneumatics and an air compressor that activates valves, including the boilers themselves. Now, we're not allowed to touch everything in the building, but what we are doing is with the new boilers, they're going to be getting new digital controls that get tied into a computer system so that the boilers themselves and the pumps and everything new can be, um, operated with a bit more finesse.
Could you just speak into the mic? Thanks. That was just a question that came up, that they thought they were eliminating those.
And operate, and you'll be, with the digital controls, you'll be able to operate them remotely from a building management system. Um, and you'll, you'll know if anything goes into alarm, um, you'll, you know, it'll call whoever is the point person for the systems.
Okay. I, I sort of know a little bit about that, so I just want to make sure we're getting the best bang for our buck, and if that's something that's being eliminated, we should be looking at something more.
No, everything that we're doing within the boiler room, and that's what MSBA confines us to, is, uh, state-of-the-art.
Okay, thank you. Any, any other questions from the floor? Anyone else in favor? In favor? That pot's closed. Anybody, um, opposed? Anybody opposed? That portion is closed. So, now we need, let's see. See, a motion to approve by Counselor Drinkwater, seconded by Counselor Conway. Do we do the roll call for us, then? Okay, so approved and sent to the clerk's office for 20 days. Roll call?
Counsel Newt?
Yes.
Counsel Rourke?
Yes.
Counsel Smith?
Yes.
Counsel Chow?
Yes.
Counsel Conway?
Yes.
Counsel Drinkwater?
Yes.
Counsel Elliott?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Counsel Mercia?
Yes.
Nine years.
Madam Man?
Thank you. Just briefly, um, as was mentioned, this is on the agenda for the MSBA this Thursday. We will be there for their vote. Um, these were all preliminary votes that had to be taken by the district before the MSBA would take it up, uh, and will report back, but we fully expect their support.
Thank you. Uh, 4.2, ordinance amend Chapter 9, create Article 14 entitled Community Preservation Committee, second reading by title, uh, in the City Council ordinance. In ordinance, amending the Code of Ordinance, City of Lowell, Massachusetts, with respect to Chapter 9 entitled Board, Boards and Commissions and Committees. Uh, open up the, the hearing to anybody in favor?
I'm Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. Um, I'm here to speak in favor of this ordinance. Uh, as the Council knows, uh, in the election last November, uh, the city adopted the Community Preservation Act, uh, to set aside community preservation funds to be expended, uh, to do the three items that are allowed into that act, which is open space, affordable housing, and historic preservation. Uh, in order to, uh, create this program, uh, the city needs to adopt a community preservation committee. Um, we worked with the Law Department to draft this ordinance that would create that committee, uh, and would allow us to, uh, start setting up the processes, uh, to, uh, submit recommendations for appropriation to the Council to expend those funds that the, the, uh, the city has already started collecting through the levy. Thank you.
Anyone, anyone else in favor? In favor? Any questions from the Council? Counsel Newt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I think Eric, Ms. Want, affordable housing is another. Uh, four areas that you can use this money for recreational, open space, historical, and affordable housing, so, uh, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Counsel Mercia?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And once this committee is, uh, put forth and they decide how they're going to, uh, spend that money, could we please be aware of that? Made known of what, 'cause I made a motion some time ago to find out if anybody knew where we're going with this money. Do we have any plans on what we're gonna do with it?
Sure, and to make clear the process, this committee merely provides recommendations to the Council. It's the Council that has to vote on whether or not, how they want to spend the money. So, there, there will not be any of this community preservation money spent without the Council voting.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Manager?
Just, um, by way of information, so, um, so far, and this kicked in this year, um, we've collected 330,000, and that's without the state match, so this could be a, a very good pool of money for CPA.
Thank you. Uh, that portion is closed. Anyone opposed? Anyone opposed? That portion's closed. Uh, let's see, motion to adopt by Counselor Conway, seconded by Counselor Mercia. Roll call?
Counsel Newt?
Yes.
Counsel Rourke?
Yes.
Counsel Samaras?
Yes.
Counsel Chow?
Yes.
Counsel Conway?
Yes.
Counsel Drinkwater?
Yes.
Counsel Elliott?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Counsel Mercia?
Yes.
That's nine years.
Back to motion responses. Motion E, response update, Lowell General Hospital, Counsel Chow?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and this is straightforward. Just a motion to request a representative from Lowell General to make a report, and thank you, Madam Manager, for making arrangement for a representative to come speak at the February 25th meeting. Thank you so much.
Any other discussion? Um, motion response F, Public Safety Infrastructure, Counselor Drinkwater, any questions? Or Counsel Elliott, I'm sorry?
No, thank you for the report.
Any further questions? Okay, I need a motion to accept and place on file by Counselor Conway, seconded by Counselor Mercia. Uh, vote to the City Manager. 6-1, vote to accept and expend $5,500 in grant funding from Greater Lowell Community Foundation to support the Kameh Senior Outreach. Permission to waive the full reading, second reading by title, motion in City of Lowell, vote authorizing City Manager on behalf of the City of Lowell to accept and expend $5,500 in grant funding from the Lowell Community Foundation to support the Kameh Senior Outreach.
Move to approve.
Motion to approve by Counsel Elliott, seconded by Counsel Chow. Roll call?
Counsel Newt?
Yes.
Counsel Rourke?
Yes.
Counsel Samaras?
Yes.
Counsel Chow?
Yes.
Counsel Conway?
Yes.
Counsel Drinkwater?
Yes.
Counsel Elliott?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Counsel Mercia?
Yes.
That's nine years.
Madam Manager?
Thank you. I just wanted to recognize Lillian Hartman, who is here. Um, this is a good grant that she's worked on and will be very helpful reaching out to the Cambodian community.
Thank you. Counsel Elliott?
No, I agree. So, we're, we're just passing this through to the CMAA. Are they gonna do the hiring, or where, is it gonna be?
Little if you want to.
There is no new city position from it. Um, we'll be, um, paying for CMAA staff to spend six hours a week at the senior center, and they'll assign some of their existing staff, um, to do that, and sort of to become their senior-focused branch of services out of our senior center.
Okay, so will they be doing any outreach to folks? 'Cause I know a lot of KMA people don't go to the senior center, so how do we make that happen?
Um, I think we'll work in partnership with them to advertise both places and as best we can through the community. Um, part of the reason that we needed this funding this year is for the census. Um, the US Census is having a, um, weekly Friday morning, uh, person there who can help people, and we'll make sure that there's the KMA speaker from CMAA available at the same time, so that's one of the city's census locations.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel Chow?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is our great, uh, programs, a great first step to reaching out to the Asian, the Cambodian specifically, elderly community. I know, uh, we came a long way, um, back in the quote-unquote "old" days, many of the senior citizens would stay home, and a lot of the, the kids would stay home with them or try to watch them, but with the economy these days, um, everybody's busy, all the kids are working, and they're looking for a social outlet, and I've been to the senior center many times, and, uh, you're right, I, I don't see too many Cambodian, uh, elderly's over there. It would be great to integrate, um, everyone into the, the same elderly community and have them have a good, um, social event. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. 6-2, vote to transfer $42,722 to elections to meet its remaining obligations as well as anticipated election-related costs in FY '20. Permission to waive the full reading, second reading by title of motion in City Council, vote to transfer $42,722 to enable the city to meet its remaining obligations for the upcoming election along with anticipated election-related costs for the FY 2020. Any questions? Motion by Counselor Rourke.
Second.
By Counselor Noon. Roll call.
Counselor Noon.
Yes.
Counselor Rourke.
Yes.
Counselor Samaras.
Yes.
Counselor Chow.
Yes.
Counselor Conway.
Yes.
Counselor Drinkwater.
Yes.
Counselor Elliott.
Yes.
Mayor Leahy.
Yes.
Counselor Mercier.
Yes.
That's nine years.
Orders from the city manager. Order of taking permanent and temporary easements and furtherance of the Andover Street Improvement Project. Waive the full reading, second reading by title in City Council, order of taking, to take by eminent domain, permanent and temporary easements in certain parcels of land in the City of Lowell for municipal purposes, namely the furtherance of the Andover Street Improvement Project. Motion by Counselor Conway, seconded by Counselor Drinkwater. Roll call.
Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
Thank you. I'm in that area of the taking of Andover Street there, and I don't have a problem with it, but I did, I was stopped by the man at the corner, and he said, "Look at what they're going to do, they're going to take out these beautiful trees." So is there a program that we could adopt to replace those that we take down? Because I think it's very important. I don't know how to...
I agree. I mean, some of the trees are diseased, but not all. Commissioner Christine Clancy's here, who's been working on this.
Hi, so there are about 14 trees, and I think since this project has began, there's probably one that's been removed, and there are some that are diseased. So we will be moving forward with that process with Mass DOT and with the town of Tewksbury to review that, and so that's, I guess it's something that still has to be reviewed and then presented, that there will be a tree haring. But I think in terms of planting, looking for opportunities, that's something that, I guess, is still to be developed and still to be figured out. That has been, I guess, a voice from people just through this easement process of just the desire to try to find space to plant trees, whether it be back in the right-of-way or in people's front property.
Thank you. That'd be good, because I think everybody's for this project. We know that we need to address it, but people love trees. You'd be surprised, and they're very upset to think those beautiful trees that they get used to all these years are going to come down. I don't know, they don't look diseased to me, they look very beautiful, so that would be good if, if I could tell him that we would think to replace them, maybe he'd calm a little bit down. I know he's not too happy about it, but thank you.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Roll call.
Counselor Noon.
Yes.
Counselor Rourke.
Yes.
Counselor Samaras.
Yes.
Counselor Chow.
Yes.
Counselor Conway.
Yes.
Counselor Drinkwater.
Yes.
Counselor Elliott.
Yes.
Mayor Leahy.
Yes.
Counselor Mercier.
Yes.
Nine years.
Report, subcommittee reports. Counselor Elliott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We'll be brief on both. There was a finance subcommittee meeting at 5:00 this evening, followed by an economic development subcommittee meeting. The finance subcommittee, we had a presentation from Mr., from the city manager and Mr. Baldwin, the chief financial officer, essentially laying out the FY '21 budget timeline, the challenges that we face as a result of some of the fixed costs, in particular, the increase in charter school, our pension assessment, and solid waste recycling and disposal. We talked about the cherry sheets, the additional revenue that we're getting from the state, which is good news, most of it going to the schools, about $750,000 will come to the city side per se. Good news is that we continue to carry excess levy capacity of $20 million that we, that's our conservative approach under Prop. 2 and 1/2. We could levy that high, but clearly we will not. It's also, to me, it's also a positive attribute when we go to borrowing, and according to standard and poise, it's a positive attribute. So we talked about the estimated local receipts of 23.4, almost 24 million. You know, the city's in sound financial condition. There are some challenges, in particular, the disposal fee. We know that as a result of the change in the recycling rules or those items that are now being accepted, that is going to change, it has changed the way we collect revenue, if you will, from our recycling. Also, the fee system that is in place, it's costing us more, quite frankly, to pick it up and dispose the trash, so, as well as the recyclables that are in the stream, the fines and penalties that will now be enforced according to this contract. So there was a motion coming out of the finance subcommittee to request the city manager provide a report on the tracks, trash collection and disposal, along with the recyclable enforcement and fees that will be assessed as a result of the new contract, and so we'll have another meeting with a follow-up. We'll also have another meeting on the school choice, motion that was filed by Counselor Mercier on the number of students and the cost that the city absorbed as a result of sending 129 students out of district. So, Mr. Mayor, that's a brief recap of the finance subcommittee. Again, there was that motion that was brought forward to request that report, and I guess we'd ask for a vote on that, Mr. Mayor, but that's a, that's a brief summary of the finance subcommittee report. So the motion was to request the city manager provide a report on trash collection, disposal, fees, and bring that to the, we'll have another meeting with the finance subcommittee.
Okay. So a motion to accept the, motion to accept the motion, to accept as a report of progress by Counselor Conway, seconded by Counselor Mercier. Economic downtown?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The economic development subcommittee meant, following the finance subcommittee report, the city manager and the assistant city manager of planning and development. Let me also state, in attendance for both of these subcommittee was, were members from the subcommittee. On finance, I should have mentioned Counselor Conway and Counselor Noon, Counselor Drinkwater, Chow, and Counselor Mercier also present. They're also present for the second city subcommittee for economic development, chaired by myself with Counselor Drinkwater and Counselor Chow. But the manager presented an update on the Canal, Hamilton Canal Innovation District. All good news. I mean, for folks watching at home, this, the process started back in 2009 through planning and the implementation of the Form Base Code. So we got an update, a little bit of a historical perspective, and the current development that's taking place, and the prospective developers that have contacted the city and have expressed interest. We get an update on the status of the Judicial Center, update on the progress of the Hamilton and parking garage, the infrastructure improvements, all were integral elements to attract developers to that particular area. So it's, it's all good news on that horizon. I won't go into the details, because we've heard many of the, much of the progress in the past, but we did talk about parking, and the city manager and planning and development, the traffic engineer, and all hands are on deck with the opening of the Judicial Center slated sometime in mid-March, or about a month away. The concern is that the new garage will not be open completely, and there is a, there was some expectation and hope that several floors will be open by the time the Judicial Center opens, with plans of being made to transport employees from the trial district and the various other, or the other two or three courthouses. So it's, there is some concern, but the manager is working with options for parking once that Judicial Center opens. Talked about the wind development parcels eight and nine. Mr. Lapoli was before the city council about a month ago, talking about developments of four and potentially five parcels with potential private development of a parking garage. Manager also indicated there might be another, there is another interested party in developing yet a third parking garage. That's all good news. So I think that's it. I'm not sure if members of the subcommittee, if I missed anything, would like to provide some additional information, but it was, it was a good meeting, we'll meet again. A motion by Counselor Drinkwater, seconded by Counselor Chow, to request the city manager provide a report on the status of the downtown development, and, so that motion carried, so that's a motion forthcoming, because at the tail end of the meeting, we talked about the downtown development and incentives available, not only to the businesses downtown, but throughout the city, and we wanted to get more updates on that, so. That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Counselor Rourke?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Counselor Elliott, for that recap. Just a quick question, Madam Manager. Parcel one, is there any movement on that one?
That's one of the parcels that Lapoli Companies is actively negotiating for, for a garage.
Okay. Is the dirt dying? I'm spending like a week since I've been over there, is the dirt still there?
Last time I drove by, the dirt was still there. D-CAM is supposed to move it, and they were supposed to move it by the time they take occupancy. They're going to turn the garage over to the trial court presumably by March 7th, but I don't know, Diane Trad is here, I don't know if we have any update. D-CAM has indicated they would move it. I don't know that they know where they're moving it yet, but Diane, do we have anything further on that? Nothing further. But they are supposed to move it by the time they're off the site and the trial court's on.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. So, sure, Counselor Elliott?
One last item that was discussed that was somewhat unrelated to the Hamilton Canal, but has to do with, with bridges. We have a report on our desk about the closure of the Pataca Street Bridge. The committee and I think everybody at the meeting, and the manager knows the serious complications that it's closing that bridge has. We don't want to compromise safety by any stretch, but knowing the traffic congestion that takes place, that exists on a daily basis now, complete closure of that bridge has compounded an already existing challenging traffic commute for many people. So, Madam Manager, we talked about perhaps convening a meeting with DOT and the delegation, or whomever we have to, to emphasize the importance of getting some relief in expediting this. I know it was a 30-month to begin with, and this is, to me, is just going to make, make things worse, and we have the school, and I'll start, to you, Madam Manager.
Yeah, no, I, it is, it was a, an emergency yesterday that resulted in the shutdown of the bridge due to a large, long piece of concrete that fell while the contractor was working. They have been actively working on this bridge, and it's been down to one, half the bridge being open. But due to that, the bridge was immediately closed. The state inspectors came up, inspected the bridge, they ordered us to keep it closed. They're going to continue their inspections, looking not just at the steel structure, but the pavement itself and so forth. So we're awaiting that decision from the state. They're the ones who, who make those calls. So that hasn't been determined yet. As soon as it is, we will let people know. Currently, though, the bridge is closed, and there's a detour in place around it, and it is a traffic problem for everybody, especially, not just, especially, but the university and the students and everybody are adversely impacted by this. So we don't know when it's going to open, or if it's going to open, and then we're going to be dealing with MassDOT as well as the contractor as to what this means to the overall schedule. Does it make it shorter because they can shut the bridge down and get the work done quicker? We don't know that yet, but we are, we are actively working with them, and first and foremost, as you say, public safety is, is important. It is important that the public know that currently pedestrians are allowed over the bridge, so students can walk over that bridge. It's more convenient for them, certainly in that area, and so that hasn't changed. So there may be, I don't want to speculate, it could be maybe trucks can't go over it, maybe buses can't go over, or maybe no cars, once, once they make their safety assessments. We're hoping they do that sooner rather than later. I believe they're going to be here again tomorrow, they were here today, they're, yeah, I'm getting the, that they are going to be here again tomorrow to conduct the safety inspections.
That's good news, and I know I can't emphasize more than I have. Something has to be done. I mean, the 30-month timeframe to me was, was a lot to begin with, so whatever ideas, solutions, we've got to be creative and try to get some vehicle access through that car. If you see it, it's just, it's making everything's worse everywhere, and I said that's all. Thank you, Madam Manager, for the update, and, you know, if we can convene a meeting with DOT and stress the importance, I know that the people in Patacaville and the city in general are affected by it.
Believe me, as I said at the subcommittee, it was not good news yesterday when we got that notice.
Thank you, Madam Manager. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Counselor Rourke?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Does this affect the trucks coming in for the garage?
No. So currently, Counselor, thank you for reminding me, when we presented a couple of weeks ago, the proposed route, as you recall, was coming down from Drum Hill, going down Broadway, and coming up Dutton. I'm kind of giving it a shortcut. We heard loud and clear, as did our project manager, who was here that night, let's see if there's another way we can do it. So since then, we've had deliveries for the past two weeks of the precast concrete, and they have been coming in off the connector down Dutton Street and into the garage site. So far, that's worked, and very little disruption. I mean, there's traffic, but it hasn't really disrupted things. There may be larger trucks, there's going to be some pieces that maybe have to be on a larger truck, that maybe that won't work. We're going to experiment, if that's the case, to have them continue down, perhaps around the traffic circle by the arena, come in and take a left into the site. So at any rate, the project manager and the contractor and the delivery company are working every day to try and get that done. So far, it's working, and we're not cutting through the neighborhoods that were originally proposed. So this, they won't be coming over by that area of town. We fully expect to continue doing what we're doing, and that's probably going to go through this month and next, and then we're hopefully, hopefully have all the concrete on site. But as it's coming in, we did have a picture, it's actually being constructed, so if you go by, you can start seeing it taking shape.
Thank you.
Okay, so I need a motion to adopt the motion and then accept the report as a report of progress by Counselor Drinkwater, seconded by Counselor Chow. Petitions. 9-1 Claims, three property damage, motion to refer to Law Department for report and recommendation by Counselor Samaras, seconded by Counselor Mercier? Oh, Counselor Mercier?
Thank you. Now, I'm, I'm not really supposed to comment on any of those claims, but there's a particular claim that where a person got some damage to the, to their car on a pothole on the connector. Is that any of our responsibility on the connector, right? We don't own that roadway, do we?
I don't believe so. The connector is state.
Sure, Madam Manager?
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. 9-2, Ms. Lanias Leezong, requests insulation on handicap parking sign at 25 18th Street. Motion to refer to the transportation engineer for report and recommendation by Counselor Conway, seconded by Counselor Drinkwater. 9-3, Ms. Lanias, Steve O'Neil, requests to address the city council regarding his property located at 10 Old Ferry Road. Does it need a?
Steve O'Neil?
Thank you. Mr. O'Neil?
Hi. Hi, my name is Steve O'Neil. I own 10 Old Ferry Road at the corner of Bonham Ave. where the proposed roundabout will be going. I am here today because in my opinion, the city and Demoulis has circumvented the regulatory procedures at the planning board where this project should have been completely vetted as every other development has to be for traffic mitigation prior to approval. Demoulis knew a roundabout was the most advantageous traffic solution, as the peer reviewer, Mr. Dirk advised. Despite this, the project was approved for traffic lights to circumvent regulatory review of the roundabout. This was done so that he could begin his project due to time and cost of completion. I submit to you that the city and the planning board were well aware that the roundabout was the most advantageous option as early as December of 2018. I have... most advantageous option as early as December of 2018. I have no objection to this project moving forward with lights, as approved by the planning board. My regulatory rights of review from the planning board for traffic mitigation from this roundabout project has been taken away from me. Had Demoulis, like every other developer, gone through regulatory review for the roundabout, I would have been able to review the roundabout and make my objections with the planning board, with this should have been heard instead of this city council. The city has partnered with Demoulis to do what is best for Demoulis's project and not me, who this project affects. Demoulis, knowing private property would be needed for the roundabout, received the help of the city to acquire any private property needed. Again, only my property is needed and affected. By Demoulis doing this and enlisting the city to acquire the necessary land, this project avoids regulatory rights that I would have had at the planning board. The city deliberately chose to bypass the regulatory review because Demoulis is on a timetable and in a hurry to get the roundabout installed in order to mitigate the traffic concerns for his business. Therefore, the city uncharacteristically allowed this to bypass the planning board, where we could have reviewed the roundabout plans and whether it had harmed any of others. Again, I am the only taxpayer affected by this roundabout. I submit that Demoulis knew from day one he would build a roundabout to better mitigate traffic for his business, and now I have no recourse other than this city council. The city is taking my property by inverse condemnation for private industry, which would not have happened for any other developer in this city. The new proposal for this roundabout calls for a six-foot dirt mound at a two-to-one slope with a sidewalk six feet in the air, with a four-foot wooden fence around 95% of my property. The original plan, which was the desired plan until December of 2019, and I submit is the better plan, shows no fence and a nice grassy slope into my property. For the roundabout, Demoulis will be adding 6,000 square feet of hot top with one catch basin to drain the added water, which I submit does not sound adequate. I want to highlight some items in the packet I have provided, as well as an outline the process that I have been through with the city for this project. I have a letter from the city dated May 10, 2019, requesting an onsite meeting under the guise of moving my monument located on the property. At that meeting, I was told that the city was going to take an easement from my property for the roundabout. When I stated this was not right, city engineer Joseph Cady stated that the city would build a wall around my property to avoid an easement. When I stated to Demoulis's engineer that that wouldn't work, to his credit, he said they would not build a wall. The city offered a land swap, which would have taken away most of my property's frontage. In a letter from the city dated October 9, 2019, I learned that my property assessment was cut from over $101,000 down to $56,000. During a subsequent meeting, the city offered me $25,000 for my property, less than half their new assessed value. Since 2003, I've been maintaining and paying taxes on this property that had been classified as a building lot between the second quarter tax bill and third quarter tax bill for 2020. The city reduced the value of my property right in the middle of negotiations. I have an engineer's letter dated July 24, 2019, stating that through available engineering solutions, I can come up with the required compensatory storage necessary to build a home. I have also included the dimensional requirements from the city for the SSF zone that the property is in. I would need to go through the regulatory process, as Demoulis did, or as anyone else would have to go through with a piece of property with no building permit in hand. It does not make sense, Demoulis would be allowed to build a 100,000-square-foot building, and the city would deny me with proper compensatory storage to build a 1,500-square-foot house in the same floodplain. This process has not been there, and I ask for the help of the city council to right this wrong. Thank you.
Thank you. We have two speakers before we take questions.
Greg Curtis. Mayor Leahy, manager of Donahue, members of the city council. My name is Greg Curtis. I'm with the law firm of Goman and Curtis. I'm a lifelong Lowell resident, and I'm here tonight on behalf of DSM Realty and also Demoulis Supermarkets. We went through a process for over two years, going to planning boards, going to Conservation Commission, Board of Appeals with this project. This was a project that was very open, and all the departments that worked with the DSM people, the engineers, the conservation people, the traffic studies, we went through all of that. Mr. O'Neil would have had any opportunity at that time to come to any of those meetings to voice any opposition. He did not. He did make attempts to talk to the people at Demoulis about his property. My understanding, and I think the Department of Developmental Services can review this also, that we're not taking any property, I don't think the city is taking any property from Mr. O'Neil. He has a lot of land that's been there for some 20 years. 20 years ago, when he had a plan developed by Bob Kill, the engineer, it was to build two house lots on that old ferry property. He bought that property from the Elks back in 2000, 2003. He built those two houses. Those houses were not approved by the Conservation Commission at the time because they're in a wetland. They continued to appeal that decision, and he was end up, he ended up being allowed to build two homes. On that plan, that's recorded at the Registry of Deeds, that plan indicates that the third lot, which is the lot that Mr. O'Neil is talking about, 10 Old Ferry Road, was a non-buildable lot. He's not made any attempt in 17 or 18 years to make any attempt to build on that. I don't think it's, to my estimation, it's not a buildable lot, but he would have to go through the same process that all of us go through if he was to see if that lot was going to be buildable. We had several meetings with him. I was not involved with the meeting, but Jim Lamp, the engineer from Demoulis, was there. He even had a meeting with Mr. Demoulis himself, discussing his concerns. They sat, they listened to him. We've had numerous meetings with Engineering Department, with Christine McCall, with DPD, with Eric Schlegel, with Transportation, and we've gone through this over and over. We've had input from Pataka Ville Residents Association. This project was approved originally with a traffic light. We went back to the planning board in 2019 to increase the size of the adjoining building, which is the building that's going to be next to the market. And at that time, we agreed, and this was open to Mr. O'Neil, if he wanted to come to that meeting, to discuss the possibility that the best scenario for the City of Lowell, for the Pataka neighborhood, was to put in a roundabout. Mr. Demoulis, at that point, indicated that he would pay the extra money to build a roundabout. It would alleviate traffic problems. It would alleviate backup problems. I'm not here to discuss the traffic issues that it's gone. But it went through the planning board. It was approved. We have a couple of more things to get by, which is the Board of Appeals in early March, which we're talking about some simple curb cuts and the signage for the building. As everybody can see, the building is moving together forward in a good clip. Hopefully, I don't know when it's going to be open, maybe by the end of 2020. But Mr. O'Neil's had many opportunities to talk about this. We're not taking any of his property, as far as I know. They're putting the roundabout in. My understanding is they're putting a curb cut for him if he wants to do something, if he wants to apply, and see if he can get a building lot there, then that's fine. He's not losing one foot of space. In fact, my discussion prior, earlier today, with Mr. Lamp, who's been on top of this project from the beginning, is that even, he'll be, he'll have a better situation with the roundabout with regards to any type of water. And he is in a floodplain. It's a very difficult situation, I know, but he's had that lot for a long time, and we're looking to move forward with this project, and we don't feel that we've done anything that isn't transparent out in the open. We've worked diligently with the members of the Developmental Services. They're all terrific people, back and forth, talking. We ended into a memorandum of understanding with the city back in April of 2019 to say, if we can do this, and we can put a roundabout in, and if that's the best scenario, we'll do it. And that's, we're stepping up, and that's what we're doing. So, I don't think there's any merit to Mr. O'Neil's claim that he's being targeted here, or that he's losing an interest in his property. We're not, he's not losing one square foot of property. I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. We have one more speaker first.
John Hamlet.
Thank you, John Hamlet, 495 Varnum Ave., co-chair of the Pataka Ville Citizens Council. We strongly support Market Basket's position. This is a very important part of the Market Basket project for two reasons. Our two biggest worries in our neighborhood are flooding and traffic. And the roundabout, as the Lowell Sun reported in November of 2018, is the best possible scenario. That quote is from a guy named Curtis. Market Basket said they want to work quickly and expeditiously. That information's over a year and a half old and was published in the Lowell Sun. This is the third time I've heard Mr. O'Neil speak. First, a Pataka Ville Citizens Council meeting in January, and then a couple of weeks ago at Conservation Commission. The Conservation Commission, the engineer on that commission was fairly clear that this is not a buildable lot. It might have been in 2003, when we had flow-through foundations, but the world changed in 2006 and 2007. In 2006 and 2007, we had two 100-year floods, and this lot was at least three feet underwater. Most of you should have received a picture of this lot. Flow-through foundations are not permitted anymore, and you have to have compensatory storage. Time and time again, I've heard references to the community of Khmer Buddhist monks and to Market Basket in terms of enforcement of the wetlands regulations. Market Basket is not in the floodplain. The bottom part of their parking lot is, but the top part isn't. And the community of Khmer Buddhist monks bought land that they could compensate for the fill in the floodplain. No such fill exists at number 10 Ferry Road. So, for reasons of flooding, we are opposed to any development of this lot. And as far as traffic, it's clear that the roundabout, the statistics that have been provided by the city traffic engineer, by our peer reviewer, and by the traffic engineer hired by Market Basket, says we will get the best flow of traffic, that I commented on just about a month ago in front of city council, with a roundabout. So, we are asking you to support the existing plan of a roundabout that does not involve the taking of Mr. O'Neil's plan, land. Thank you.
Thank you. At this point, I got to open it up to the council, and you can address any questions they'll have. So, any, Mr. Counselor O'Neil?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, if I could have Representative of Market Basket come back to the podium. Thank you. So, you mentioned that it's been, this project has been gone on for two years, and you went through planning, conservation, and zoning.
Correct.
In all those, say, planning, when a petitioner coming before the planning board, do you then address all the, their butter, right? You send all the notice to all their butter on the list. Is that correct?
Yes.
Was Mr. O'Neil was one of the persons that you sent the butter list to?
Everybody, I think it's everybody within a 300-foot
I see.
radius of the project. But anybody's welcome to come to the meeting, and we've had, you know, quite a few meetings, and then we went back to planning board for a second time, when we, as I explained earlier, we had an expansion of the building that was going to be next to Market Basket, so we had to come back for that, and we also came back because the plan is to take down the 705 Boulevard project, which is the old Boomer's Building, and that building is going to be coming down. So, we needed to get a review on that. That has been approved by the planning board, and we're looking at just a couple of items with the zoning board for a couple of changes in the curb cuts, and then we have to go before special permit for the signage that's going to be used for the shopping plaza.
So, Mr. O'Neil had three opportunity to address those board, the planning, conservation, and zoning. Was, am I correct?
Correct.
Did Mr. O'Neil appear in any of those board, any of those commission to address his concern?
I don't know if the conservation, I wasn't at the last conservation, but I was at all the planning board, and I was at the Board of Appeals and the first conservation meeting, and I don't believe that he was at any of those meetings. But he did make an attempt. He did talk with the Market Basket personnel, and his attorney talked to the Market Basket personnel, and had discussions with the City of Lowell regarding his land. But we did everything we could to try to minimize any issues, and we feel that what we came up with with the final plan, I don't have final plan in front of me, but I think everybody has probably had a copy of it, that this is the best scenario, and this is beneficial to not only the neighborhood, but also to Mr. O'Neil for his property. He's not losing any land. He's having the ability to use it. If he decides he's going to make an attempt to build on it, then he'll have to go through that process.
How can he build on it? You mentioned that this is one of the, this is not the buildable lot. I do recall back in 2000, there was a zoning board members.
It was listed as a non-buildable lot on the plan. It meets the requirements of the square footage of the lot. I think it was listed as a non-buildable lot because at the time, he was in a very, much in a wetland area, and it may have been done at the time just to appease the board or to appease the neighborhood because of the fact that, again, the Conservation Commission, my understanding, was denied the two lots being developed, and he had to appeal that decision and get those two lots approved with some sort of flow-through type foundation. But this is, this is in the wetlands. Mr. Hamel is correct. I'm not an engineer, but in any research we did, this is not a place where you can just come in and put up a house unless you want to build it like they do in maybe Newburyport with stilts. I don't know.
So, when you mentioned that the condition, this appeared to be a condition of zoning board of appeal, that you can only build two lot, and the other lot is unbuildable. How can you?
I'm just looking at what's on record. The plan that's on record indicated two lots.
Right.
He got approval on those two lots. He built those two lots. He sold those two homes
Right.
in 2004.
I see.
So, from 2004 to today, he's made, he's made no attempt to try to build on the third lot.
I see. All right.
So, that's all I understand from looking at the public record.
Right, right. Thank you, sir. Mr. Mayor, I do concur with Mr. John Hamel that this is a great project. I know that, it's appeared to me that it's been two years that the Market Basket has been working with the city to try to address all issue concern, particularly the Pataka Ville Neighborhood Association or Pataka Ville area. It's appeared that the meeting has been transparent and inclusive, basically. So, this certainly is something that we need to have in terms of the roundabout to address the traffic issue in the area, the Old Ferry Road. So, I'm standing in support of this. Thank you.
Counselor Samaras?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's through you to the city manager or the city solicitor. First thing, I mean, points of clarification. If the city, if the city is working in partnership with the private developer, and the private developer needs some lands taken by eminent domain, has this not been a practice over the years where the city, or any city, has worked with the private developer for the common good?
I'll refer this to the solicitor, but a private developer doesn't have the right to take land by eminent domain.
That's correct.
But the solicitor.
What I'm saying is, but isn't it a common practice for a city or a town to work with the developer if it's, the need for eminent domain is there?
If it's the public good.
If it's for the public good.
I think that's the.
Madam Solicitor?
That is, that is the general practice, and as has been stated, that is, in fact, for a time what happened here. But what should be noted is, at no time was there actually going to be a taking. What really was going to be happening is that additional fill was going to be put on a sliver of this parcel. Just to expand on what has already been brought before the council in terms of the status of this particular parcel, it is indeed listed as a, recorded at the registry as a non-buildable lot. Original plans that had been submitted at the time when this parcel was originally purchased and then and then subdivided was that it was to be divi, it was to be split into three parcels. Three houses were proposed. There was a rejection of that from the Conservation Commission. Eventually, a proposal came back before the bodies of two parcels. This third parcel was intended and is intended to this day to be the water retention area for the other two parcels. So, it isn't as simple as this can be reversed and a request can be made to now make it into a buildable lot. Also, when this property, when this project went forward, there had to show at the time, in order to build the two buildings, they had to show and establish that there had been a substantial deviation in the plans. The substantial deviation in the plan was that, that third parcel would be a non-buildable lot. And so, that is where we are today, and it would, I would argue, has to stay that way for, for the test of time. The, and so much though, that when it was represented before the ZVA, counsel for Mr. O'Neill had represented to the CBA that the future use of this lot was, it was going to be donated to the city as a park or donated to adjacent property owners, again, to help mitigate the water issue that was ongoing and still is today.
Yeah. No, I mean, you answered more than, you answered the direction that I was going in, but also I just wanted, you know, out there, I mean, but there was no preferential treatment given to Market Basket if, if, if there was a need to take anything by eminent domain. What I'm saying is, it's simply a process that's been used, correct? Okay. That, that's one thing. The issue that I've been very pleased with when Mr. Hamel came up to speak is, during this whole time with the project, it was very important to me, and I think every city council member here, that Market Basket worked well with the Pawtucketville Association, because Pawtucketville Association represents the residents of Pawtucketville very well, and so, based on all the information that we've received, this is in fact true, correct?
That is my understanding, that throughout the process, there has been communication and cooperation with the neighborhood group when issues came up.
Yeah. So, I mean, not to belabor this, so at this, but at this point, there is no, there is nothing in the package or the design package of this roundabout to take any of this land, Mr. O'Neill's land, correct?
That, that is correct. The current roundabout does not take land. There had been prior designs that would have, as the solicitor indicated, have fill on part of it, and so there were other designs, but when an agreement couldn't be reached, it was redesigned.
Yeah. No, I'm, you know, I'm not looking to take sides, I'm looking, my issue is the City of Lowell, protection of the City of Lowell. So, basically, it's, to me, it's a moot point. There is nothing going on. There is no taking of land by eminent domain. There is no taking of land or need for that particular lot of land by Market Basket Corporation, correct? And so, no harm, no foul. I mean, I don't understand. It's a moot point to me. I mean, there's, what are we, there's no debate here, and I don't feel that the city or the city council has any right or responsibility to interfere with this situation, because that's all it would be, interference. You know? Is, would city solicitor, do we have a right to, you know? In other words, interfering in something that does, is not actually happening?
Right. Well, there's a, there's, there's a process, and as Attorney Curtis has indicated, this has been, in fact, going through a lengthy process for quite some time before the various regulatory boards.
And as I said, was, brought to me, was, and approved of by the Neighborhood Association, which protects the rights of the people. Thank you.
Counselor Chow, Counselor Elliott, and then Counselor Conway.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, to Madam Manager. Thank you both for coming, or three of you for coming, making the presentation. I noticed a lot to process here in a short period of time, especially we have two competing interested parties, and depend how you look at it, I think there might be two or three issues at hand here. I know that on the, the Mulusai, I know they follow the regulatory process, so that, that's one, and the, the second issue is probably fairness. And the third thing is, I, I don't think Mr. O'Neill is against Market Basket or the city. I would be more inclined to think that he's concerned about being treated, treated fairly. I think one thing that I understand, though, is just through the, how, how do you, how does the city evaluate the property? I see here that just a few months before, it was valued at $101,000, and then a few months later, it's $56,000, and then we offer Mr. O'Neill $25,000. What is the requirement of the place of value, and how does the city negotiate with an individual who's making investment in the city to be, feel like they're treated fairly? Not just in this case, but for any future investment in the city?
Yeah. I, I'll answer, best I know, and the solicitor can, can fill in on, on the legal aspects. So, the discussions had been ongoing, it's my understanding, there had been ongoing negotiations with Mr. O'Neill, with his attorney, and an issue came up about this being a buildable lot. At that point, there was dispute as to whether this was a buildable lot, based on all of the documents that I think the solicitor has referred to. It was at that point that the, the city who were negotiating spoke to the assessor's office, who looked at it and said, "This is not a buildable lot." They looked to the, the registry of deeds and to the recorded documents, and, though it had been taxed as a buildable lot. And so, they changed it correctly, because it's not a, a buildable lot that was carried in the, in the documents or on the, on the record. And so, that was the nature of, and the tax adjustment was made accordingly. In conversation with the, the solicitor and the assessor, when a use changes of a lot, the assessor doesn't necessarily know that it does. It typically would be the property owner who'd bring this, once they had an order, let's say, in this case, whether it was from the zoning board or the planning board or whomever that, in this case, I believe it was the Conservation Commission. The solicitor can, can fill that in. At that point, where there is a deed and a restriction and a recorded plan restriction, oftentimes, it would be the property owner that would bring it to the assessor and say to Mrs. LeMay, "This, you're taxing me this. It should be taxed as a non-buildable lot at this point because of these orders that I have in, in front of me." That didn't happen, I don't know why, but it didn't happen, but when it did come to her attention, she made the correction. I don't know if the solicitor has.
The, just to, again, add on to that, the, in this particular case, the final disposition before the Conservation Commission, as well as the ZVA, was that the, in order for this project to move forward and to construct two homes, this third parcel would remain, forever remain, non-buildable. The, what typically will end up happening is that that information would go to an assessor by a property owner, so that they're not being overcharged. Beyond that, whenever the tax bill was coming out, it, and it's being taxed as a buildable lot, again, it's incumbent upon the property owner to then notify the assessor's office through the abatement process, which has just been brought up in the, in the past month, in terms of the, how to go about doing that, but that's what would have been done. It would have to be done timely, and, and then there'd be a reduction in the amount of money that was paid in a, on a yearly basis. That didn't happen, in this case, by the, by the property owner, but once this, because of this project, all of this came to light, the, those in the city that were dealing with it immediately brought it to the attention of the assessor, and the correction was made. As far as the, it's, you also mentioned the $25,000, and then the assessment was for 50, and again, there was never a taking. The amount of money that is, is, was being offered as some means of good faith compensation, in which I think the parties really tried very hard and arguably went above and beyond what, what could be expected, but, and what was realistic. The, that amount that was offered was not a, to purchase the property or to take the property as a whole, or to even take part of the property. It was just to compensate for a, a small portion of use of that property with, with
All set? Counselor Chow, Counselor Elliott.
Okay. Madam Solicitor, I am confused now. So, either the property is valued as a buildable lot, and according to the letter that's in here from an engineer, that it can be buildable based upon engineering and addressing, you know, flood zone issues with compensatory storage. So, why are we valuing the property, offering money, and then saying that it's not worth what it was? I, I think this was completely mishandled, quite frankly. Why is this before the Conservation Commission, again, if A, the report said, "No traffic lights, the bed is a roundabout." And I have to say, even before this, last year, Madam Manager, we had a Transportation Subcommittee, because I wasn't convinced personally, unbeknownst to any of this, that, that a roundabout was the right way to go, but I did speak with PCC folks, and there was a process, and ultimately, a peer review indicated a roundabout is the way to go. Okay, fine, fast forward. Why is there another plan before us if we're not going to take an easement, I think, for a piece of that property? I, I, I guess I don't like the fact that someone paid taxes for almost 17 years, and by virtue of the fact, thinking that it's buildable, based upon information that it can be engineered, I, I understand, and then during negotiations, then all of a sudden, we say, "Oh, it's not worth it, it's not worth a fraction of it, it's because it's not buildable." And then, all of a sudden, you can't get taxes back because, I mean, after a certain timeframe, it's all, as you mentioned in the, and by the way, we just got this tonight, and we get the report from Counselor Mercier's motion. This would have been more helpful to have well before this meeting, quite frankly. It's a five-page report, and I haven't gone through it at all whatsoever, so, so I, I understand the confusion, and I do think DeMullis has gone through great lengths to work with the neighborhood and not put a traffic light in. I think that would not be a good thing. And I've spoken to you about this, Madam Manager. It seems, it's before the Conservation Commission. I guess I, I don't understand why it's back before regulatory boards. I guess it's a change to the roundabout now, which means the process starts over. Nobody's trying to create more obstacles for the development. It's, it's moving forward. We're very concerned about the traffic in that area. My fingers crossed that this roundabout will work. I, I think it will, but it just seems there are so many moving parts, and it's before the Conservation, and accordingly, Mr. O'Neill has been paying property taxes for 17 years. He can't get it back, and you're saying it wasn't an offer. I mean, what, what gives here? I'm, I'm thoroughly confused with whether the city is leading the effort for the easement, which I think they are, or were, and, and now we're not. So, I mean, I prefer the city would just take it so it's not a buildable lot and, you know, keep it open space for recreation space, but was that ever offered as a, as a suggestion as part of this?
Madam Solicitor?
The, there were a number of different scenarios, including a, a land swap that was, that was explored by the, by the parties during negotiation, but again, the, this parcel, at the start of negotiation, as is the case now, was, was not a buildable lot, and it was, and that was determined back in 2000, when Mr. O'Neill went before the regulatory boards at the time, and in order to have the two properties built, the two homes built, this third parcel was to be, was to remain the water retention area.
Okay. I don't mean to interrupt, Mr., there's a letter in both packets, one from Diane Trad or the Planning Development, and Mr. O'Neill, that says that it can be a buildable lot. So, I can understand the confusion, why Mr. O'Neill felt that, well, he, he's just going to continue to pay, you know, pay taxes on it with it being assessed at $101,000, but can we, can I, can we hear from the, both of, Mr. O'Neill and Mr. Curtis?
Sure. I'd like to clarify, I, I, I'd like to
Let me just clarify one point. Well, Mr., just let Mr. O'Neill clarify the question from the council.
First of all, an A and R would not have been approved if I didn't have the proper land frontage, and the Elks did that at the time, they own the property. The Elks tried getting the permits for the homes. When they didn't succeed, as Counselor says, the city solicitor, they needed to reduce the project only because they wanted to help the neighbors, so they went from three homes down to two. That third lot was never intended to retain water for that whole parcel. Another thing, when they say, "I could have went to any meeting, I had my attorney go to one of the Subcommittee meetings and spoke then," I didn't care, and to this day, I don't care if Mr. DeMullis builds his store with traffic lights as approved in December of 2018. It wasn't until April 2019 that I seen that they were going to take my property, so what could I do, until I seen they were going to take my property when they came and seen me? So, that's why their plans, and I don't believe they're still finalized, they're going through Conservation, they just changed them again in December. The, all the planning board did was said, "You work with the city, the city agreed to take any property," just like they took Water Department property, that they're going to store 5,000 cubic feet of water on with a retention pond from the other side of Old Ferry, but if I wanted to build there, it's been perfectly clear, I got to come up with my own compensatory fill, I couldn't touch the city property. But Mr. DeMullis is being allowed that with the city because it's a joint project. They circumvented my regulatory rights because I didn't see a plan with a roundabout, so what objection would I have if I didn't see a plan until April of 2019, when they came to me? And that's when I decided that there's a problem here, it affects me. And when the city solicitor says they offered me $25,000, that was for the whole parcel of property. That wasn't for an easement, okay, because they did not make it clear. And I'll tell you why, because when they wanted to do a land swap, this is what I got, a red mark and a green mark, and when I said, "Can you please explain about my frontage? You can get that figured out." They weren't doing any engineering or any design until I accepted it. This is the city, this is what I got, you want to swap the land. I goes, "It takes away my frontage. I don't know, we'll get it designed and see." Why should I spend money on a piece of property that I've maintained over 20 years, and there's been a, a lot of non-facts spoken here, but over 20 years, and when you tell me you're offering $25,000 for just an easement, that is not true, it wasn't made clear. My attorney was at the meeting, and it is a buildable lot, because it isn't the question of, "Is it buildable?" It's, "What do I have to do to build?" But if you're predetermined without seeing it, then, you know, that's your opinion. And besides that, to build a six-foot mound stopping at my property, doing exactly what the city said they would do, from the first day back in May, when I met them, under the guise of moving the monument, six foot, everybody, there's a picture in your packet where you're going to be looking at, coming from Old Ferry Road, that's a two-to-one slope, and there's going to be a four-foot fence above that, because that was at the plan at the Conservation two weeks ago. Now, there's a Conservation meeting tomorrow night that I have to go to, because if this gets rubber stamped there, or the passes, like, like the Conservation said, they're not here for any, any neighborhood, they're here for the water compensatory storage, which it's being provided on, on city property. And one more, the engineer, and anybody can watch this, it's at the Conservation meeting on January 22nd. If you watched the first 20 minutes, the best scenario, this one was second best, the original one they gave me, the best scenario would be for DeMullis to shave three to four feet off the whole intersection to lower it, but as the engineer on the Conservation stated, that would cost Mr. DeMullis another $250,000. We wouldn't want him to have to spend that money, seeing he's paying for the roundabout, and he is. And And if there was a light there as approved at the Planning Board, I wouldn't be here. I wouldn't care. But like I say, through inverse condemnation, you're taking my property, and it's just not right.
Counselor Elliott, any other questions?
Mr. Curtis was going to say something.
I just wanted to clarify, when we went to the Conservation Commission the first time, we weren't going there with regards to the land at ten Old Ferry Road. We were only going there for the property which makes up the old drive-in where we're building the building, and also the land where the Boomer's Restaurant. It wasn't until we talked with the city, we came back to the Planning Board, had a public hearing, which Mr. O'Neill did not come to, had many meetings back and forth with Engineering Department, Traffic Studies, Peer Reviews, everybody, that the best scenario was to put a roundabout. When we decided that was the best route to go, we all worked together with the city, what do we need to do? We had to apply then to the Conservation, because by putting in a roundabout, you are using more land up, which was city land, and you had to go get determination through the Conservation. So at the outset in 2018, we did not have to go to Conservation for that. We had to go to Conservation for the roundabout. And I think there were several plans that were put forth, and I think people from the Developmental Services can attest to this, that some had a little strip of land coming from Mr. O'Neill, others, more land from the city shifting it around. But now the final plan that is there apparently has no land that's being obtained from Mr. O'Neill, and that any water that normally goes down onto his property wouldn't be lessened by the type of roundabout and the way they're going to construct it. And they're also, my understanding, putting in a curb cut. You know, if he wants to get access to his land, there'd be a curb cut, because we are putting curbing, you know, we're dealing with national grid, we're dealing with moving wires. This was a, this was a, a plan that I have to really give a lot of credit to the city and a lot of credit to Developmental Services, because they worked very hard with Engineering and Traffic Study. Very difficult to do anything with national grid, and we're, we're at that point now, where hopefully we're going to get into the springtime and get this project rolling with the roundabout in a way that hopefully is not going to, you know, come to too much interference for a short period of time. But this is a tremendous project for Petucketville, for the city of Lowell, for job creation, for tax revenue, and we're at the eleventh hour here now. And Mr. O'Neill has had many opportunities to talk to Demoulis, to talk to the city, to try to resolve this. And again, if I was a property owner and I thought I was getting charged too much in taxes, I'd file for an abatement, or I would have filed for an abatement a long time ago. But apparently, you know, it only came up at this point when he thought his property was going to be affected. So I really don't think it's something that we should be dealing with at this point. We are going to Conservation. I hope we get a good result there, and we'll be going to the Board of Appeals come, I think, March ninth. And at that point, we should be in pretty good shape to finalize everything on this project. Thank you.
Counselor Elliott, you have some-
I have some other questions, but I'll turn the floor over.
Counselor Conway, then Counselor Mercier.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm a little confused myself, so just bear with me a bit on this. Just some housekeeping questions here to try to make things a little bit clearer. What is the difference, what was the difference in the cost between the, the lights, the lights at that area versus the roundabout? Does anybody have that answer through you to the-
My understanding, it was three hundred, three hundred thousand dollars additional costs to construct a roundabout as opposed to a traffic light.
Okay.
We had a lot of pushback from the traffic light, from Petucketville residents, from just the people in general that said it's going to create more traffic because of the backup in queues, especially in the early morning. So we talked about it, and the roundabout was the way to go, and Mr. Demoulis indicated that he would pick up that cost. We're also spending money on traffic analysis and going out, I think, over, over five years with analysis of the side streets, and if we have to do more down the road, we're, you know, we're willing to do that. But about three hundred thousand was the figure I was giving.
Yeah, thank you. I, I applaud Mr. Demoulis and the corporation for listening to PCC and making that change, because again, the traffic, traffic up in that area, the traffic in the entire city is, is a bit crazy, but certainly in that area, and you're putting in a project, and, you know, we, we don't know the, the true results of what that traffic is going to be. So again, listening to PCC and making that change, going from the lights to roundabout and putting in that extra money, I think it does show that, I mean, there certainly is good faith there on that part. And I know that the Demoulis Corporation has always been a tremendous partner to the city and to the surrounding towns. Having said that, what really confuses me, if I was the owner of that, of that parcel of land in question, and one day it's worth a hundred and one thousand dollars per the city of Lowell, and I'm not saying anybody up here made that decision, but somebody made the decision that it's worth a hundred and one thousand dollars. If I'm the owner of that parcel of land, I'm pretty happy. Then I wake up one morning and they say to me it's worth fifty-six thousand dollars. Well, I'm not happy at all. Why did it make the change? Now, here's the, here's the point. Maybe legally, it, it, it all can be done, and I know that it, it says, and it has been mentioned here, I believe, by the city solicitor, that it's up to the, the owner of the parcel of land to, to ask for a rebate on that. But I think also it's, I think it's also extremely important, the fact that the, a homeowner or a, or a, a landowner should be feeling comfortable of what that information is coming out of the city and trusting it. Because obviously, somewhere along the line, somebody dropped the ball, and it, and it paints incompetence, as far as I'm concerned. And I understand that, you know, he can't ask for the rebate, but I'd be rather upset about it myself, too. And I'm not talking about just the, the, the Demoulis project, but just, I'm just zeroing in on the piece of property right now. The question I have is with this, one other question, is with the, what is the impact going to be with this project on that parcel of land? Is there going to be any impact on it? Does anybody have that answer?
I'm not sure what you mean by impact in terms-
Any type of adverse impact on that, on that existing land at all? Because we're talking about walls, and we're talking about fences and so forth. Is that-
Based on the information from the designer, when, in, in the one who redid it, we're not, the city's not taking any of the land. There is a slope, I think that's been mentioned.
Okay.
It's a two-to-one slope. I think the engineer or the, whoever's worked on this, a few people in the audience, and that slope is consistent with a slope on the side of the highway, is what I'm told. But there's also a fence, so, maybe if you can address that.
So is the slope going to impact, adversely impact, that parcel land?
What we're told is no.
No, okay, all right.
Again-
That's, I'm trying to, I'm trying to put all the pieces of the puzzle together here. It is a bit confusing, and a lot of information has been put on our desk in a short period of time to, to try to sift through it and see what, what actually makes sense.
The Commissioner.
I can just clarify, so this, the way that the current design is, is that the slope will actually end at the edge of, of Mr. O'Neill's property. And actually, the contractor is proposing hay bales to be lined on the edge of that property, so there's no impact, even just temporary for construction. Nothing would fall down that slope. So that really, those, those hay bales as a temporary condition will be a barrier for construction and then removed once the roundabout's installed.
Okay, thank you. I'll probably have some more questions.
Your Counselor Mercier.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We all know that Mr. Demoulis has been an outstanding partner in the city, provides a valuable service, and he's starting a new project, and I'm happy that that's happening for the people in Petucketville. But I'm not happy with what I'm hearing, the way we're coming about with this project here. I'm not happy at all. It's so confusing, it's, as my colleagues to the right said, and, and I understand they're not taking any of Mr. O'Neill's property. No, but they're putting a six-foot barrier all around it. I don't know, I'm not going to call it a fence, because it is a fence. It's a barrier of dirt that creates a slope, two-to-one slope. So you know what? Let me see if I have this right. For twenty years, this gentleman created beauty along there, open space, cut the grass, had a monument to his mother and father, and now, because they understand through the engineers that a traffic light is not the best advantageous thing to put there, but a roundabout is, so they're not taking his property, they're putting in a pit hole, a pit hole. So when you go by there, you're not going to see the square, the nice flat surface, you're going to see a pit hole, is what you're going to see. I, I'm very disappointed, because I think, I thought this person that is doing the development was a lot better than that. And then to hear on top of it that this gentleman, this family paid a hundred and one thousand, but because of the circumstances now, it's devalued to twenty-five thousand? So what is he going to do? He paid this money, he's only allowed to get an abatement for the last two years, which, that's not a big deal. What's the big deal? This man is getting screwed. That's what's happening to him. No, they're not taking his property. Oh, but you know what? We'll give you a curb cut. We'll, we'll screw you, but we're going to give you a little curb cut. How disgusting. I'm disgusted. I would like to make a motion that, and I'm understanding that Mr. O'Neill is going before the Conservation Commission tomorrow, I would like to make a motion to contact the Conservation Commission and ask for a two-week continuance in order to come to a consensus and rectify the situation. I believe we can do it. Something isn't right here. This man and his family, that's, that's not, that's not right, what I'm hearing. I'm, I'm, it's not good. So that's my motion, and I'm, I'm sticking with it, because tomorrow night, Wednesday night, he's going to go before the Conservation Commission, they're going to decide, and he has no more say-so. That's wrong. This is what I represent here in the city, unfairness, but because we have attorneys that know how to get through the loopholes for the sake of doing something, that it's not the, the, the job of the owner of that property, but it, we'll put it on the city's side and let them do it. That's not what I want to be a part of. No, that's not right.
Thank you, Counselor.
I'll second the motion, but I would like to speak and maybe ask a couple of questions, if that's okay.
Sure. Mind if you ask some questions first?
So, just like, the, the roundabout, the new plan for the roundabout, did that ever go in front of the Planning Board?
I don't know whether Mr. Curtis can answer that.
The roundabout was brought up at the Planning Board meeting in November, and that was approved, that the expansion of the size of the plaza, because we were expanding the building, and we're also looking to knock down the old Boomer's Building and put in a smaller building there. So there was a change in the plan, we went back to the Planning Board. As part of that Planning Board decision, it was indicated in the decision that if we were going to create a coffee shop at the corner where the existing Boomer's Building is located, that that, that we would continue to work to put in the roundabout up at Old Ferry Road. So it was all brought out at public hearing. It was the favorite of the board that we went with a roundabout rather than a traffic light. We were approved for a traffic light, and we could have gone through with the project, started building the project with a traffic light. But when it came down to the Planning Board's push and the community development and Petucketville Residents Association indicating that they would rather have a roundabout, and after traffic studies and peer reviews, they indicated that the best scenario for that area would be a roundabout, no traffic lights, and they approved that. I mean, the project has gone to extents of changing lanes, you know, we have a big problem. We have the, the bridge that goes across. Until that bridge gets changed, we're doing a lot of mitigation even on Petucket Boulevard. We know there are times when there's traffic there, but those are traffic lights. But to eliminate a traffic light and have people go through a roundabout that allows them to flow through without the need of backing up and queuing, it is a much better scenario. And that's what we all decided, and that's what the Planning Board wrote in their decision.
I'm not questioning the roundabout. You know, I understand that's going to happen, you know, and I don't think everybody has a problem with that. You know, you keep on going back to that for some reason, but was the roundabout specifically on to the Planning Board for a public hearing?
Yes. It was brought up at the-
I was taking care of-
Public hearing, yes, it was, it was. And Mr. O'Neill was not at those meetings. I was at those meetings, and there was, John Hamlet was there, there was a few other people there. There was a resident from Old Ferry Road who lives in one of the houses that is right next door to Mr. O'Neill's property. He came, he had some concerns about the traffic and concerned about vehicles queuing up, and he was there, and we discussed the roundabout, and it was part of the Planning Board decision.
Okay. Mr. O'Neill, do you have something to say?
Yes, that's correct. It was discussed, but there were no plans presented showing what they would-
You have to speak to the mic, though.
I'm sorry. That's correct. It was discussed. That's when Demoulis and the city got together to do any land-taking necessary. There were no designs that you could visually see to say, this is what it's going to look like, that all Planning Boards look at for traffic mitigation. That didn't come out, the plan, until I received it in May. There were no design plans. They were doing it because they knew through the peer review that the, it was the most advantageous way. And as Counselor just said, because they were going to get a drive-through, donut shop, so that became part of the decision. So they approved it without regulatory review, which I was denied, by accepting it, no matter what the city came up with in him. And the city has a lot of answers on this, because they did help design it, and they were going to take my property until December of 2019, when they came up with the new plan for the Conservation Committee to go through the Conservation. That's what I said, for the roundabout. But that was never, the design was never shown to the Conservation, to the Planning Board in detail. So I had nothing to object. Lights, I'm fine with, that's, I didn't care. He should be able to develop his property, but I shouldn't have to pay the price from the city and the Demoulis.
There's a couple of questions. So the original plan after the, the lights was out the window, the traffic light, that was for some fill in a small grade slope down, is that what it was?
That's my understanding. I, I know Christine Clancy or Natasha, if you can answer that since-
Yes, the traffic signal would have been, the intersection would have been fundamentally the same. For the roundabout, the grades are a little bit different.
So there's no question that there's a different grade, you know, a different level of depth or steepness with, with what's happening now than before?
Yes, and the roundabout plans are on the Planning Board website, just FYI.
So, so the only reason why you didn't do it is because you couldn't come to an agreement about the, about the easement of the property?
So, I'm sorry, didn't-
The only reason why that, that plan didn't go through was because, you know, there's a failed agreement?
For the traffic signal, the, um-
I'm sorry, forget the traffic signal. I'm talking about the roundabout, yes.
Yeah, so we, we tried very hard, actually, to work with Mr. O'Neill and talk to him in great detail about all of these things. And he was not receptive to any of the ideas that the city had in order to help him.
Okay, you know, and I hear that, but, you know, it's actually his property, right? So he should have, you know-
Sure, understood.
You know, and then with the new plan, and if the picture is correct, you have a four-foot fence, then you have a certain level of, of grade or steepness, right? I mean, I-
I haven't actually seen the package that Mr. O'Neill provided.
That, that's what it is, right? It's a deeper slope and a four-foot fence?
It's, it starts out with virtually no grade, and then it, oh, thanks. It starts out with virtually no grade and then gets steeper as it goes around, and then there's a split rail fence behind the sidewalk.
Okay. Okay. And there are no safety concerns with that?
I'm sorry?
No safety concerns?
The two-to-one slope, there are no safety concerns. No, guardrails not required, fence is not required.
Great, okay. And then the only question that I had is, so, does the city mean an offer to Mr. O'Neill? Was there at any point in time when an offer was made to him?
That's my understanding. There were negotiations with Mr. O'Neill, his attorney, and the attorneys, and I know Market Basket had people there. There was an offer, and there were a number of iterations. I don't know, I wasn't there, but I know there was talk about taking a slice, as the solicitor said, talking about transferring some land to him for, that would be compensatory land. On that city land on the other side, there were just a number of negotiations. And there, there was also an offer of $25,000. That was the, a dollar offer that was made.
So when that, when that 25 grand was offered, was that offer made before or after the change in value of the property?
Before.
Oh, before.
Okay.
No, well, I, I, actually, I don't know when, when the exact change of value happened.
No, because I agree with the other councils, that, I mean, it's, you know, whatever was done correctly or not, or legally or not, I mean, it's really a, it's a bad look.
Yeah, I don't know why it wasn't done 20 years ago. I really don't. But when it did come to the assessor's attention, she looked at it and said, this isn't a buildable lot. She just went to the registry of deeds, I believe, and just said, it's not buildable. It shouldn't be taxed that way.
So if, if, if he's being told that it's not buildable, but then our DPD director has a letter saying that it is?
No, that's, that's Mr. O'Neill's letter. That's not our letter. Mr. O'Neill had provided that letter, so that was included. But it isn't, no. Everything we have shows that it's not buildable.
Okay. All right. And then, go ahead, you go on. And then, you know, lastly, you know, I just, I just have a problem with people projecting what a land owner would do with his land, you know, whether it's, you know, build a house or put a dog pot. I mean, I think that that is, you know, a little, it shouldn't be said, right? It's his land, you know, and depending on what he wants to do with it, if he wants to let it sit the way it is for the next hundred years, or he wants to put something there that he has to go through boards to do. You know, I don't think that we should be, you know, saying that, you know, he can't or can't do something, right? And, you know, I, I heard Mr. Curtis, or Attorney Curtis, say that timing is very important, it's of the essence. So, to Council of Mercy's motion about, you know, giving it one more try and getting everybody back in their room together for a couple of weeks, to try to figure it out and to take it off the agenda for tomorrow night, the roundabout is not going anywhere. I think we know that. But, you know, in order to, you know, to at least try to satisfy the, I guess you would say unhappy party involved, you know, and coming down and get the crunch time, and I know it's the business deals, I guess, and sometimes the deals are made at the, you know, at the final hour or something, so I would support Council's motion.
Counselor, drink water.
Just one question. As I sit here trying to kind of digest everything that's been going on here, just one thing I wanted to clarify. Between November of 2019, when this was brought before the, the planning board, and there was also the offer made to Mr. O'Neill for, for $25,000, between November 2019 and now, am I correct in thinking that there was a change made to the design of the roundabout, so as not to affect Mr. O'Neill's property at all?
That's correct. So there was an offer made, and I'm not exactly sure of the date, but there was an offer made. It wasn't accepted. And then there was a change to not have to involve Mr. O'Neill's property.
And, and what, in summary, what was that change? Was it significant? Was it...
It, I, I understand it shifted the, it shifted the...
The roundabout shifted over about three feet to, or five feet to, because, to, to, to get off of Mr. O'Neill's land, because he wasn't interested in allowing any kind of right-of-entry or easements.
So, so nothing related to the, the slope or anything like that? It just had to do with the, essentially, moving everything over a few feet?
Originally, there was a plan that called for a small bit of easement coming from Mr. O'Neill. And that was back in 19, November, October, November. That's when the city was working with him. He wanted some sort of negotiation. When that all failed, my understanding is that all they did was re-engineer the plan. Market Basket, the mullah supermarkets, paid to re-engineer the plan to shift the roundabout over, so that would not affect Mr. O'Neill's land. And that two-to-one slope, that slope ends at the level that Mr. O'Neill's land is at now. So there's no, there's no impact on Mr. O'Neill's land. In fact, it's gonna benefit Mr. O'Neill if it's gonna do anything, the way it was shifted over. He's not losing one foot of land. He's not, he's gonna have less water going on to his property. And again, if he decides he wants to build on that lot, and he wants to make an attempt to try to build on that lot, that's his prerogative. But we don't need his land. We tried to coordinate with the city and with him to make the roundabout in a little different location. But when that failed, we just simply moved the roundabout to be away from his land completely. So we're not impacting him.
All right. Thank you. Before we vote on the motion, just, can the, can the rotary be moved over 20 feet or 15 feet, so it really, because that slope, in my mind, does affect the property, but it's not the...
Yeah, there, there's already a lot of utility relocations, and there's a transmission line. So it, it, we don't, I don't think the, the designer would have the ability to move it 20 feet.
Okay. I gotta, all right. Counselor Rock.
So, so you're gonna put a slope right before his property and a fence up? I mean, how can you say it doesn't affect his property?
Yeah, how can you say that?
I mean, it's just...
It absolutely does not affect his property, because you have a two-to-one slope. The bottom of the two-to-one slope ends at the level of his property.
If you drive by there tomorrow morning, on a sunny day, it's a beautiful area, right? I mean, it's, it's green space, it's, it's...
It's gonna remain green space, correct.
Right. But what you're proposing is to add a slope down to his property line, and then put a fence up. Is that right?
And a sidewalk.
Okay. But you're saying that it's not gonna affect his property. Of course it is.
All right. I, I think we should probably vote on the motion, because I think it's gonna...
Can I just say one thing? Is there a slope on his property now?
There will, there is no...
There's no slope on his property now. There will not be a slope.
All right, why don't we...
There's an existing slope that's four-to-one.
Will the road be raised for that roundabout? Will the road be raised?
It's, there's a slight increase closer on the Varnum side, yes.
Right. There's an increase in that.
Right, and that's why the slope...
There's a fence of dirt all around it. How do you say you're preserving the integrity of the neighborhood when you're making a pit hole on this man's property?
Ma'am, it is already a hole. Like, it's already, because it was used for compensatory flood storage for the other... And, and I, we're not implying that we want to, you know, force Mr. O'Neill to do anything with his property. But the reality is, it is completely in the 100-year floodplain. And even, in order for him to, to shift his memorial, his parents' memorial, onto his property, which is currently on city property, he would have to go before the Concom, because it would be impacting flood storage. So, you know, Mr. O'Neill is, of course, welcome to attempt to build on the lot. It's just, it would be very, very difficult.
All right. I don't, I don't think we're supposed to be debating the effects, because some can say it will, and some say it won't affect it. But Counselor Mercy, I think we should vote on, Counselor Samaras, then we should vote.
Thank you. Now, just, just for clarification, there's a number of issues here. One of the issues is the taxes that he's had to pay on, on the land. To me, it's a separate issue from the entire process, okay? But the thing is, I think, you know, what we have to say is that the city, Market Basket, and Mr. O'Neill have worked a long time in trying to come to a settlement. He has the right to turn down that settlement. There's no question about that. So what I've seen is, he's turned down the settlement, and they've made some adjustments to not go on to his land or take his land. And that's Market Basket's choice. Do you know what I'm saying? In other words, there's a lot of things to look at, but the thing is, there's been no, to me, there's been no shabby treatment. And sometimes, you know, we are accusatory to the city and the workers, but the thing is, there's never an easy answer to any of this. There's no question. So let's leave the issue of the tax situation. That has to be settled in a different manner. But the issue is that Market Basket has a right, I mean, working with the Neighborhood Association, they made a choice. Mr. O'Neill has turned down that choice, and the thing is, so his land is not gonna be touched. That's, that's what I look at, that's what I see. So I mean, I don't see, you know, some type of insidious actions being taken, you know, on anyone.
Counselor Conway.
Mr. Mayor, I just want a clarification on the, on the motion there, through you to the city solicitor. Does this board right here have the right to vote to delay a, a Conservation Board meeting?
No, those are, those are things that are squarely before the Conservation Commission.
I'm, I'm sorry.
But these are issues that are squarely before the Conservation Commission.
So in other words, if we, if we vote, so we, would this motion be then out of order to vote?
The, the issue of whether to have a delay is an issue that is under the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission and not, not the council.
Okay. Counselor Noon, and then Counselor Rock.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a question with regard to motions to, you know, request the conservations to postpone their tomorrow meeting two weeks from now. What do we hope to get two weeks from now than what will happen tomorrow? Maybe I could ask the, the Market Basket attorney, Mr. Cur- Curtis.
Sure. Mr. Curtis?
Again, I think if people want to come to the Conservation Commission meeting tomorrow and discuss their issues with the Conservation Commission, that's the venue. You know, we're gonna go there tomorrow, we're gonna have a meeting with Conservation, present what we need to present, and hopefully there'll be a decision made. If they want to continue it for two weeks, that's their prerogative, but I don't think that's the city council's prerogative.
Mr. O'Neill?
It's the city's land, so they're the one requesting and going through this process for conservation. So they can request a two-week process for their property. And also, on a two-to-one slope, I'd never be able to drive out of over 150 feet where they're putting that slope on my property. So I respectfully disagree. It doesn't make my property better, it makes it worse.
Counselor Rock.
Yeah, I, I knew that the city owned that land, so I, I think, you know, the maker of the motion, if she agrees, you'd say, request, you know, the city manager, make, you know, make that request to the, if Ms. Clancy tomorrow, go in front of the board on the city's behalf, just have her ask for a two-week delay to try to get this done?
Yes, she could do that.
Yeah, I'm not sure exactly what is pending at Conservation Commission tomorrow. Can someone answer that?
What?
I haven't seen the agenda. I don't know what it is.
I thought, I saw Ms. Clancy there a couple of weeks ago, representing the city. I, I could be wrong, but I thought she was there.
Ma'am, I just don't even know what's on, what, what is on the agenda tomorrow.
Well, one thing that's on the agenda is the BAP's tent when this spiritual person is coming. That's on the agenda.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Christine McCall, Senior Planner in Development Services. I'm a Conservation Agent to the commission. Tomorrow night, the roundabout was continued to tomorrow night's, so it is on the agenda.
Yes.
The commission asked for a couple of revisions to the plan and some extra details. I think they were prepared to vote on the petition at the last hearing, but there was not a DEP file number. We do have that now, so they can vote. To move forward with the continuance, the applicant and the commission have to agree to the continuance. The city is the applicant. However, the commission could choose to vote anyways, if they're prepared. There has to be an adequate reason for a continuance related to the project.
So wouldn't, I mean, wouldn't this be an adequate reason?
It's not. I understand Mr. O'Neill's concerns, I understand the council's concerns, but these concerns are not relevant to the commission filing. The commission, the plans as provided are, they're reviewing the compensatory flood storage for the proposed roadway project, and the detention basin, the associated stormwater infrastructure that's as part of that project. So Mr. O-, because we're not touching Mr. O'Neill's property, he's not an applicant. He's not a party to the application, and therefore...
Yeah, I would just imagine that if the city manager told one of her employees to do something, that it would be done. You know, it's just my, my thought process, so...
I agree. I just wanted to make it clear that there has to be an agreement on that continuance.
Counsel Elliot.
Thank you. So, can I have Mr. O'Neill come up, please? So...
Yes, sorry.
So, the letter dated, I keep going back to this letter from Landplex there.
July?
July 24th. And it's also in the packet from Planning Development. So this letter was given to them, so you presume that this was a buildable lot if it needed to be engineered. Is there any other reason why you just think that would, it would be a buildable lot?
I, I do have an email chain from the city's chief planner, Christine McCall, dated January 17th, if you want me to read it. 2020. "I ask her, 'Good morning, hope all is well. I was just wondering what would need to be built at 10 Old Ferry besides Conservation approval.' Her response came on January 21st. In addition to the notice of intent, I believe the construction of a single-family home at 10 Old Ferry would require a revision to the previous EVA decision that allowed for the lot subdivision, and a new plan would have to be filed. This would be required to amend the current plan that is filed with the registry." And then she says, "Once the site plan is submitted with the proposed structure on it, additional relief may be required. Our office has not had an opportunity to review your proposal for dimensions. My, my property will meet all the proper dimensions if I built a house there." This comes from the city. She, and to, to second that, she was at every single meeting and on every correspondence on all the letters from the city and my attorney. And once again, I just want to make clear that the $25,000 offer was offered once, and it wasn't for the strip of land or an easement, it was for the entire property. They, they, it's, that's what the offer was. And the other offer, two offers, was one with the paper I showed you, with a triangle drawn on it, and said, "We'll do a land swap." That was the only two offers I got from the city. I'll submit these if you'd like, for the record. I don't know if you want them.
Okay. Thank you. Secondly, so the city is the applicant because of compensatory storage, and now a detention basin that's going on our property. So, can I also ask Ms. McCall, what other revisions was the Conservation Commission looking at or additional information for, for tomorrow night's meeting from, from the applicant, which would be us, the city?
Christine?
Hi, I was, Christine McCall was, was there. I was there in attendance. I'm speaking, I'm, are representing the city for the applicant of this project. And so what the commission asked for was additional details on the fencing.
Can I ask you, well, I'm confused with who the applicant is and why the city is representing them. The city is the applicant, or...
Because the city's the applicant is what, that's why I asked for clarification. It's a roundabout in the public way, so the city is the applicant. Is that fair to say?
The mullahs is paying for it, and they're asking for the changes. That, that's why I'm confused. And look, I think there are so many issues that we need to sort out, Madam Andrew, and I would like you to be the point person, because it seemed like we have multiple departments dealing with multiple individuals. And, and I think that you should, should be the, the point person on this to, to sort it out. So, Counsel Mercy, I agree with it. There are some, there are two sides. It's a, it's a, it's a good project with a good company, but Mr. O'Neill is a taxpayer, and I feel there's always a solution to some problem. So, I guess, whatever information there is, are there other questions?
Sure. As far, so, I mean, this refer, as far as we're seeking compensatory, compensatory storage within a city, a city property, that's the portion where the detention basin's going. So that's why the city is the applicant, because it works within the right-of-way, but also it's, it's our city, it's our property. So they asked for a detail on the fence, the Conservation Commission asked for that.
They also asked for, at the meeting, Mr. O'Neil provided some information about information from his, his engineer. So they asked for that letter or for those plans, and that letter was provided after that meeting. And I think there were no plans provided, it was just that one letter. Also, what was asked was to provide a curb cut to his property. That was something that had previously been discussed, but that was something that the commission had, had discussed at the meeting and wanted to see that on a planned revision. And lastly, the discussion came out about the monument on the city, on, currently in the city right-of-way, but right adjacent to Mr. O'Neil's property. And that came up as the, the Conservation Commission wants to, I guess, make a condition that that can't be moved back onto his property.
Okay. Thank you.
Can we roll call, please? I'm with a question, whoever the term is.
Sure. Roll call. Council Noon.
No.
Council Rock.
Yes.
Council Samaras.
No.
Council Chow.
Yes.
Council Conway.
No.
Council Drinkwater.
No.
Council Elliott.
Yes.
Mayor Leahy.
Yes.
Council Mercier.
Yes.
Four yeas, no, five yeas, excuse me. Thank you. Moving on.
So, are we going to have through you to the city manager ask through Christine McCall to delay this meeting tomorrow for two weeks? Because that's what the motion was. Because I will be there on another matter and I'll know what's happening.
A request can be made in writing to the commission, and since they're an independent appointed body, they'll actually have to vote on the continuance. And as long as there's a majority vote to grant the continuance, it will be continued to the next scheduled meeting.
Okay, that's fine, thank you.
Thank you. Onto city council motions. 10-1, Council Mercier requests city council create an ordinance or file a home rule petition that prevents a city council from holding another elective office during their term, seconded by Council Rock. Council Mercier?
I think we have registered speakers.
Sure. You want to do the speakers first? Karen Cirillo.
Good evening. I'm former Lowell City Councilor Karen Cirillo, and I'm here tonight in opposition to this motion by Council Mercier for a home rule petition that prevents a city council from holding another elective office during their term. This motion is disrespectful to the community of Lowell. The residents of this city vote to have their voices heard. The sitting council and their position with Lowell is by the grace and sensibility of the people. When our constituents vote, they are trusting in the promise, honesty, and integrity of the person they vote to be their champion for a complete two-year term. We had two city councillors run for city manager Eileen Donahue's vacant senate seat, Council Rodney Elliott and Council Edward Kennedy. For the Democratic nomination, Lowell voted in favor of city councillor Edward Kennedy. For the senate win, Council Edward Kennedy defeated John McDonald in Lowell by a wide margin. I was listening to what our community was saying. They spoke loud and clear with their vote. Did this now mean our constituents wanted Senator Kennedy to go back on his word and not finish his promised term? There is one thing I know, and that is Lowell expects integrity from their chosen council. Senator Edward Kennedy held on to his integrity and promise to the constituents that voted him in as a city councillor. He did not disrespect their voices in such a manner as you would have him do with this motion. What is this motion saying? Is it saying that our elected officials cannot do a good job while holding two elected seats? We have proven success stories of elected officials holding two seats. This motion is very disrespectful to Steve Pangiotakis, who served admirably on the school committee while also being a state representative. This motion is very disrespectful to Senator Edward Kennedy, who served admirably on the city council while also being a state senator. This motion is belittling to Councilor Sakari Chow, who I am sure preferred to earn his seat and the trust of the people rather than just having it handed to him by having an elected official being forced to resign their seat. Why does Council Mercier want this elected coun, why does Council Mercier want the elected councillors to go against the will of the people who voted them into office? Why does she want to stymie those...
Let's not make it personal, okay? Just speak to the motion.
Yeah, yeah, disrespectful.
Thank you. Just enforce the rules, please.
Okay. Who would want to follow, how, why, let's say that people would want to follow in the esteemed footsteps of men like Steve Pangiotakis and Senator Edward Kennedy? This motion is not forward-thinking. Those who will come after and want to better themselves will still, while still upholding their promise to the Lowell voters. For years, the council has spoken about our great relationships with the delegation. What better way to have a strong relationship with delegation than to have a member on the council? The timing of this motion is quite interesting. We had Senator Edward Kennedy sitting in that chair doing exactly what this motion is fighting to eliminate. Why is this motion on council floor now instead of when Senator Kennedy was on council and very able to speak to his efforts, all he continued to accomplish for the city of Lowell in upholding the will of the voters while holding both seats? I just find it interesting that Council Mercier had months to bring this motion to council floor while Senator Kennedy was also a councillor. And it just seems like the timing was quite cowardly. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Mercier, do you have a speaker? There's another registered speaker. Mr. Mayor, Judith Durant.
Sorry, I'll be brief. Thank you for hearing me.
Let's just not make it personal. It's, sure, thank you.
I know what to do. I just wanted to say that I don't really understand the motivation for this motion, that serving as a city councillor is not a full-time job, and many other councillors have a full-time job in addition to serving on the council. And I don't know if it's a concern of conflict of interest. Four of the nine councillors currently have government jobs, including the maker of this motion. Two others retired from careers with the Lowell Public School System. And to me, this speaks to a commitment to public service, which in my humble opinion is only more beneficial to the council. When Ed Kennedy was sworn in as senator in January 2019, he had the rest of that year to finish his Lowell City Council term, which I am grateful that he did. Council Kennedy played an important role in the Lowell High School debate, and he was committed to serving out the term and staying with the project through approval and funding. And as a friend pointed out, what could possibly be wrong with having a member of our legislative delegation sitting with us here in the chamber every Tuesday night? We currently have a system where if a councillor leaves the council for any reason, we tap the number 10 vote-getter from the previous election to fill the vacancy. But as we all know, beginning in two years, our council will be reconfigured. What if a future district councillor decided to run for a state representative or senator and is successful in that bid? And what if that same councillor ran for that district seat unopposed, which is likely to happen sometimes, or even against a candidate who garnered only a very few votes? The district would either then be left with no councillor or one that almost nobody voted for. So with many unknowns ahead with our new system of government, how we elect a mayor being the biggest, I don't believe that now is the time to muddy the waters with a change that appears to have no merit or reason. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Mercier?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This motion asks for the city council to create an ordinance or file a home rule petition that prevents a city councillor from holding another elective office during their term. Nowhere have I mentioned anyone's name. Nowhere have I made this personal. Nowhere have I said that, that whomever previously served two seats did a poor job. I never said that. I do like Senator Kennedy, probably not as much as some of the speakers here. I merely ask him that a city councillor who chooses to become one, to become one, remain one. And if a councillor decides to run for higher office and is lucky enough to get it, choose one, but not double-dip. And let me just say to one of the speakers, I didn't run for office to work for the sheriff. It isn't an elected position. I specifically asked him during the televised, so let me just say, I can't say it any more fairer than that. Some years ago, a state rep from Lawrence, and we all know that it was Willie Lantigua, he ran for mayor of Lawrence and he got it. He assumed to hold, he assumed to hold both positions. This was within his right. People felt it was unfair, so they filed a home rule petition to make him choose one. And a couple of our state reps supported that and filed the legislation so that he had to choose one. It became law. He chose to be the mayor. I, I think you might remember that. So I'm not creating anything new that hasn't been done before. I want to do the same thing here. When Kevin Murphy was being interviewed for the position of the, of the city manager, I asked him, I specifically asked him during the televised interview, "You represent Drakot as an attorney, Mr. Murphy. Will you still assume that duty or will you become just the city manager?" And he said he would step down as the attorney from Drakot and create a full-time position to be our city manager, and that's why I supported him. And through you, Mr. Mayor, to the city manager, I asked you the same question. You're an, an attorney. Would you be practicing law or would you devote yourself full-time to be a city manager? You said yes, and that's why I supported you. If a person is on the planning board or a zoning board or any other board or commission and they become a city councillor, they must resign that board. Am I right, Council Solicitor? If, if someone becomes a city councillor and they're on the board of directors, such as, such as Judy Durant, a campaign manager for Vesna Noon, that's true, you had to step down from the board to be a city councillor. That's what I'm understanding. Cory Belanger did the same. He stepped down. I'm asking the same respect for each elective office to choose one. This is merely what I'm asking. I could have done this when, when there was a previous state senator that, that made a promise to Sakari Chow that he'd, he'd stepped down, but he didn't, but that's all right. It wasn't about Ed Kennedy. It's about moving forward and creating it now. That's why I bring it up now. Someone said, "Well, why don't you include the school committee?" I'm not talking about the school committee. I don't work, I'm not a school committee person. I'm a city councillor. I think this should be a home rule petition to allow that. I don't think the people in the city said that they, they thought this was fair. I, I think, I heard from quite a number of people that said, "I don't think it's right people should hold two positions." And I know Steve Pangiotakis held it before. I'm not concerned about the past. I'm concerned about tomorrow. I'm concerned about the future and what I feel is not right. And to bring this one step further, I feel that if Senator Elizabeth Warren became our United States Senator, I'm very annoyed that they're running off to different places to campaign. Who's watching, who's watching the fort here? Just like Pete Buttigieg, I, I feel that he's the mayor of Subbin, Indiana, and I don't think it's fair that he should be running around trying to run for president. That's just my opinion. So, hey, I don't care. That's how I feel. And if it passes, fine. If it don't, I, I said what I felt was right. So I'd ask for a roll call on it.
Sure. Council Conway for...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's my understanding that the Massachusetts State Constitution prohibits holding a federal and a state or city office simultaneously. In other words, you couldn't be a United States Senator and be a city councillor, even though I'm sure they would miss out on a lot of fun here, but they couldn't do it. Having said that, that is pretty clear in the Massachusetts State Constitution. However, what is not included in the state, Massachusetts State Constitution, is prohibiting someone to be on the state and municipal, having two offices. For example, as has been brought up by two individuals tonight, the Steve Pangiotakis being a state, at that time, a state rep, and also a school committee going back into the 1993, and, and just recently Senator Kennedy. And we, we go back to George Kula Harris, too, who were holding two offices simultaneously. A school board here in Lowell and also the greatest, greater Lowell. If you look back, too, you have from Springfield, Angelo, I believe it's Popolo, I might not be pronouncing that correctly, but he became a state rep in 2006, and he was also a city councillor. And if I recall, I think he, he carried out his city council term, and then he didn't, he didn't run again for it. And then if we go back to a Tim Toomey from Cambridge, who was a state rep in 1993 to 2016, and a city councillor since 1990, which obviously holding two spots simultaneously for a number of years. So the point I'm trying to make here is that there is in the state constitution a, there is a provision in there that, that denies you from a federal to a state, but it does not do it from a state to a municipality. So I think that I, I couldn't support this motion as, as written. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Samaras?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, Mr. Conway covered most of the area that I was concerned with. The reason why I can't support this, I don't, okay, there was that issue in Lawrence, but I think we'd be one of the only communities in the state that would not allow a selectman or councillor to run for office and stay in that office and finish that term. We'd be one of the only communities in the state to allow this. I, it's not part of the ordinance or regulation or part of the constitution. It, we are given the right to run for office and finish, and if we were to win another office, finish that office that year. And actually, I think you're allowed to run for it again. You could run, and that would be the choice of the people. So it's simple. I, I just couldn't support a motion that would put us really in a totally different category. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Chow?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I respectfully would like to welcome back Counselor Karen Cirillo back to the chamber. Thank you for coming to speak before all of us. And since my name was brought up a couple of times, I feel compelled to make a disclaimer. I understand that all politics are local, but not necessarily personal. And for that philosophy, I, I do not take any of the issue the motion bring up as being personal. When I read it on the agenda on Friday, I talked with Council Mercier. We never brought up the former councillor and current state senator. We were all very proud of State Senator Kennedy. And actually, he and I have been friends for, for a long time, for close to 20 years. We've always been on good terms. And now that going forward, as I am sitting here on the council, I, I will support this motion because it is about the future. It's not about the past. I think back a few years ago, the leaders did their purpose well, serving two positions, maybe. But I think the times are changing, and I think the people expect more inclusiveness, more democracy process. And if you have different people representing more people, we'll have more voices at the city hall and more voices at the state. So I think more representative come out of Lowell, in Lowell. I think that's a plus for our city. More representative will give us more delegation authority. And I always look at, I, I've been to State House many times to visit. Lowell has always been the envy of many other cities, many other gateway cities in the Commonwealth. And for that reason, I, I... And for that reason, I, I support this motion just to welcome more representative, whether at the city or at the State House. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Rock?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I could not agree with Counselor Chow's remarks more. Um, you know, to have different voices and different people to help serve the city, whether it be on the, uh, city level or the state level. Um, and I think any, um, move to, uh, to prevent that, stop that from happening, um, I think is just wrong. So I will happily support the motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Elliot, and then Council Drinkwater?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think it's a great motion. I think it's common sense. I think it's practicality. And quite frankly, I don't think it's disrespectful at all whatsoever. Counselor Mercier didn't make it personal. It's about serving people. And yes, I ran for the state senate as a city councilor, and I made it abundantly clear. I was not going to serve two governing bodies. We talk about the Constitution. If you can't serve in a federal and city council office, elected office, what would be the difference if it's a state and local? There are separation of powers and duties to prevent any abuse of power. That's why these things are written. That's why there are checks and balances throughout the federal-state Constitution. It's just common sense, in, in my opinion. Uh, so I'm going to support the motion wholeheartedly. I think it makes sense. We want to engage more people in the city. We want them to run. Yet, when they look at, "Well, I can hold two offices," and that's okay. And, and I don't think it's okay. I think we serve 110,000 people here in the city as city councilors, and then when you have a senatorial district, add another four or five towns to that. It's, um, I don't think that you can, you can serve two masses. I think there are plenty of able, competent people in the city that would love to serve in just one board. And I think that's the way that we should approach. So I, I hope this passes. I think if you talk to the average person out there, would say, "I, I don't understand how someone can run for two offices and hold two elected offices." So I think it's a good motion. Counselor Mercier?
Thank you. Counselor Drinkwater?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We could go through and analyze a bunch of different scenarios, whether they're possible or whether, um, somebody has served in two offices, whether it's in this city or, or another jurisdiction. And you know what? I think in some cases, um, serving in two, um, offices simultaneously may not be advisable, and in some cases, um, it may be fine. But ultimately, I think it is the, you know, the average people, the people of each respective community to make those decisions. And I think we should take great caution before we take any decisions out of the hands of the voters. Whether a member of this body decides to pursue, uh, another office, uh, voters in this community, in this city, um, will approach a voting booth full, fully knowing, um, that that candidate currently holds an elected office. And if they are successfully elected, um, to two offices concurrently, um, they're going to have to go back to the voters every two years or even one years. And they'll be evaluated based on, um, how well they're doing in that job and whether they're serving their constituents. So, um, I think voters are generally, uh, pretty savvy. Uh, they're going to know, um, who's doing the job, who, who's, you know, serving in a, in a committed fashion. Um, and in this particular case, um, I'm going to err on the side of not taking any choices out of the hands of voters. So I'm going to oppose this motion.
Thank you. Council Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last year, I do enjoy having Senator Kennedys or Counselor Kennedy and Senator Kennedys here in this chamber. He provide a lot of information to that, from the State House to all of us and his council. We enjoy having him. And while there's a precedent, uh, as some speaker spoke of, we have former Senator Steve Panagiotakis served two roles. Senator Kennedy now, uh, last year did two roles. There's a role responsibility difference. Counselor Drinkwater spoke of. Are we really want to take the right from the voters who make a decision with or not that he's, he or she can hold two office? I'm not going to do that. I think, you know, um, the speakers spoke, both of them, yes, former city councilor and Judy Durant. I listened to them. They make sense. They not do it out of just doing it. They don't take time to come here and say things that not benefited to the whole community, giving the right to the voter to choose who they should elect or not elect. I'm not going to support this motion.
Thank you. Counselor Mercier?
Thank you. Um, I just want to make a couple of comments myself. So I'm going to support the motion. Um, I feel that, uh, when people vote someone into office, they expect them to do that position that they hired them for. Um, a lot of times, we're given a, um, a free pass when we run for another office, while we're in office, and I don't think that's right. I think you're shortchanging the position that you're in by doing that. Um, whether it's right or wrong, that's personal preference. Uh, people can vote you in, they can vote you out. So, um, and then, again, there's always a choice, a chance of conflict. Um, so why put ourselves in that type of position? So, um, I, I just feel that, you know, circumstances are always different. I think there was a little bit of respect whether, um, this motion isn't about one person or anybody in the past. It's about moving forward, like you said. Um, so I'm going to support the motion. Thank you.
Anybody else? Roll call.
Council Noon?
No.
Council Rock?
Yes.
Counsel Samaras?
No.
Counsel Chow?
Yes.
Counsel Conway?
No.
Counsel Drinkwater?
No.
Uh, Counsel Elliot?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Counsel Mercier?
Yes. Five yeas.
Five yeas, yep.
Thank you.
Counsel Samaras?
So, Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
Just on this last motion that passed, it passed, um, will the managers, a lot of departments of the manager report on whether it's a home rule charter change or whether it's a city ordinance? Because the motion includes one or the other. So I mean, I presume it's going to be an ordinance because, um...
I think it's a home rule petition.
Home rule petition is what the motion is. Well, I, I think it, presumably, it could be a...
Let's see.
Because the, the state statute allows for certain number, uh, has a, a number of, um, structures of government, forms of government. None of those include this, so...
So, so the motion says one, either/or, so...
Either/or.
The last, the...
Whatever it takes.
...sister to give us an opinion as to which it is.
Thank you.
Okay. Because presumably, if this goes down to the legislature, what could happen? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, 10-2. Counsel Samaras requests city manager create a team of first responders, which includes fire, police, Trinity ambulance, Lowell General Hospital, whose purpose will be develop a plan to ensure the first responders' vehicle, uh, vehicles will be able to successfully move through periods of gridlock construction in the city. Second? Counsel Rock, sure.
Thank you, Mr. ...
Counsel Samaras?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the city manager. You know, when you look at this group that I've asked you to form, you know, the, whether it's the fire, police, Trinity ambulance, Lowell General Hospital, uh, I think we've got, they've got one of the finest records in the Mermack Valley for reacting to people's needs. But the thing is, we know Lowell's going to go through a lot of construction at this point. And one of the questions I, I had for the chief, but I have for you, do we have control of all of the lights yet in the, in the city?
Control of them?
And it was, the, in other words, the red, green lights, stoplights, in other words, like a city like Boston and New York can literally change them, you know?
No, I don't believe that is the case with our system.
Okay.
Well, don't they have that button, though?
It depends on where you're talking about.
Yeah. There, there are some smart lights at, at certain areas.
Very few, but the...
Very few.
Yeah.
But I'm talking about the ability to control the lights and to all of a sudden, you know, open up certain, uh, roadways.
On an emergency basis, you mean?
On an emergency situation.
I, I would have to get back to you. I don't believe so, but we can, we'll get back to you.
Well, there's several things, uh, I'd like you to look at. One, how do, you know, do we have a plan? I mean, because if, literally, if someone has a heart attack up, up, up our Highlands and what, you know, to get over the Rook Bridge at traffic time on Friday night, it's just not, it's just not going to happen. But we're going to have construction of the high school, we're going to have construction of 38. We have the closing, just, we're going to be having the closing of this bridge, protect a bridge. There's so many issues that we have to deal with. So I'd like to note that there's more planning on how to deal with this. But also, down the road, technology has come a long way. And there are two issues, I guess. One is contacting Lowell General Hospital, Trinity ambulance, to talk about the type of equipment that they have, that, you know, are they as advanced as some systems are? By the time the patient gets to the hospital, all of their vital signs, everything that's should be known is there and available for the doctors, uh, to receive. The next aspect would be is, what steps can we take in this city to use the technology that's available today to move these vehicles around the city, you know, in a, in a, in a better fashion or assuring that, you know, our citizens will be safe? It's, it can be expensive, but the thing is, I think at this first point is to look at it and look at what are the problems, you know, and, you know, to give us that information so we can work with you on this. Thank you.
Any further questions? Counsel Elliot?
Um, thank you. I'm not going to support this motion. I don't understand what it's trying to get at. I don't understand what the purpose is when, we just went through, and I attended a number of meetings with all first responders when we were going through the ambulance contract, and they went through all these issues. There are ambulances that are stationed in certain parts of the city that are ABLs. So if there was a magic bullet, then that's fine. But they went through great lengths with the ambulance company to make sure, to address all the concerns and set up certain zones in this city and make sure there are ambulances placed in order to respond in times of emergency. So if there was, if, I, I don't want to have the manager or others meet when something has already been done. And it was done, um, when the contract was out and all these issues were addressed, I went to a number of meetings right here in City Hall. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Mercier?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not supporting it either. Just what Counsel Elliot said is exactly the truth. They have been trained. They have been going to strategic places. You can go around the city and see where their, uh, their base is. So I, I, I think, I don't know what the purpose of this motion is. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Samaras?
Purpose is simple. The safety of the citizens of the city of Lowell. Yes, I, I do know that the, there are ambulances located in certain locations. I'm talking about leaving that certain location and getting to the hospital. All I'm asking is to review again the plans to ensure the safety. Yes, things have been done, but I'm saying that we can do it better. I'm saying technology is changing, which will allow us to move emergency vehicles, whether they're ambulances or police cars or fire trucks through the city at a faster pace. I'm looking at fut, the future of this city, not what has been done, but what can be done. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd just, Counsel Elliot?
It's a frivolous motion, Counsel Samaras. You just asked if there's a button...
Now we're making it personal. It's a frivolous motion. I'm allowed to make the motion.
All right. Why don't we just...
Thank you.
Roll call.
No, can I please speak without being interrupted, Mr. Mayor? Because I let the speaker have his say. It's a frivolous motion. That's, that's, it's a, that's a fact. You just asked if there was a button that's going to trigger all of the signals in the city. I, I've never heard something so ridiculous. If that was that easy, then we'd be able to use buttons to move the traffic throughout the city that is virtually at gridlock. So that's why I don't want, I don't want it, I think the first responders have done a very good job and met for weeks and weeks to put a plan in place. And when it comes time to renew, then that should be. There's, there's no magic bullet here. Of course, public safety is of paramount. But this is just, it's a motion to just get a response to something that we know already exists. Go to the meetings next time, because they're very, very informative.
Counsel Conway?
Uh, ju, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the city manager. Do we have a plan in place at this point?
In terms of which plan?
Right here, what addresses the, the motion, 10-2.
So that, there's the ambulance, which is a separate issue, but the, in terms of police and fire, as it pertains to gridlock, I mean, the, I don't know of a written plan, um, that we have.
But there must be something. I mean, I, you know, again, I, I, I'm not necessarily against it, but would, if, if the makeup of the motion, um, would, uh, allow a, a friendly substitute, instead of develop, just say a review. Uh, because if we already have something, there's nothing wrong with reviewing it, again, to say, maybe we can add something to it to make it a, a better plan.
Yeah, I, I, I think the wording is, is that this is to successfully move around gridlock pertaining to construction. So I don't know that there's a specific plan on that front. I mean, it's getting around the city for emergency purposes.
Okay. So in other words, we, we don't have any plans now?
No, I'm not saying that. I'm saying, uh, if, if you're asking me, is there a plan regarding construction and gridlock as a result of construction? I will have to check and see if there, if, if there is such a plan that is dedicated or directed at that versus getting around the city in emergency situations.
Yeah.
And we're happy to get a report.
Okay. Thank you.
Counsel Chow, then Counsel Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, the way it is written here to create a team, um, as a new counselor, I find it difficult to agree with that, just because, uh, as Counsel Conway said a minute ago, we don't know if there is a plan in place, but maybe if, um, Counsel Samaras would amend the motion to get a report first of some kind, so that way for me personally, um, to understand what was available. If the way it's written is to create a team that we don't know if there was a plan in place or what kind of team would it be and we sort of be left out of the loop.
Can I respond?
Sure.
So I guess the question, maybe I'm not understanding the question. Um, so as I'm reading the motion and, and whether there's a plan for the specific purpose of the motion. We do have an emergency management team. We have other things in place, but I can't tell you for certainty that they have a plan as it pertains to gridlock, but we can get you that, that information.
So...
Hey, well, Counsel Noon?
I'm sorry.
Back to you if you want. Counsel Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I know that a lot of work has been done in terms of with the emergency management team. You know, um, I would welcome idea, you know, that would work better and help address this gridlock, you know, construction and whatnot, uh, because we want to get from point A to point B, meaning from here to the hospital as quick as possible. Uh, if we have families in that ambulance, we certainly want our, our loved one to get there as fast as we can. And this is one way to look at it and say, maybe it's a possibility to get there as fast, or the fire truck to get from here to the burning house as fast as possible. We do want that. So I would welcome, uh, opportunity or idea that will make it better or that, that can do better. So, um, you know, it's always new things to, um, to learn or to do. So this is not really, uh, it's a good idea to try to make it better. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counsel Conway?
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to make a motion to, um, to substitute, uh, for develop, for, to put in review instead.
I second it.
All right. Did you, Counsel Rock?
Yeah, so I, I understand the, you know, the intent of the motion, which is fine, but I would imagine that fire, police, and ambulances all have different ideas of what they're doing. I mean, it's not the, the same job, you know, so, I mean, to put them all together, to come up with one plan is probably counterproductive. I mean, I, I would like to see what the city has now, if superintendent, which they wants to come and tell us what he, what they do...
Yep, I just wanna add one thing from the chair. I'm not gonna support the motions. I just think that all these, all the department heads, the chiefs, Trinity ambulance, they're all professionals. I know that they have plans in place, and they're doing this all the time. So, I understand the intent, but I just think it's redundant, and if these guys aren't doing that job, we wouldn't have them here in the city, so... Roll call.
We have a substitute motion to amend the motion to, instead of develop, to include review, so I guess that'll be our first roll call.
Right, to delete the develop.
Mr. Mayor, I wasn't given a chance to respond to the maker of substitute motion or any of that.
Sure, Counselor Samaras?
Thank you. No, the thing is, I appreciate, you know, Mr. Conway's observation and Mr. Rourke's observation. All I'm simply trying, whether it's worded the way people wanna see it or what have you, there's a constant need to review what is, how we meet the safety needs of our people. There's no question about that. Technology is changing. I was just giving some examples of change. The one thing I've tried to do in every motion or a response to anybody's motion is to not make it personal, to be as objective as I possibly can. If people wanna support it, fine. If they don't wanna support it, fine. But to take the ridicule of Counselor Elliott, where he's just simply ridiculing and raising his voice to try to intimidate or what have you, I don't know. I have the right to speak, I have the right to make a motion, and everybody has the right to turn it down. It's as simple as that.
Thank you. Counselor Elliott, and then roll call.
Thank you. I wasn't ridiculing, I wasn't raising my voice, I was simply trying to speak, and I was interrupted by Counselor Samaras. Frivolous is not an insult, it's just a motion that doesn't make any sense, in my opinion. So, he can take it in whatever way he wants. We have professionals in this city, the chief, the fire chief, EMS, and if they can't adapt, and I'm sure they'd love to be able to, because they're stuck in the same gridlock we all are, day in and day out. Just go over the Rourke Bridge and see how an ambulance tries to navigate anywhere from 2:30 to 7 o'clock at night. I think we should let the professionals do their job, they do it, and we're just trying to micromanage, so... Not trying to ridicule anybody, but I'm entitled to your opinion, and I'm just gonna vote against it. That's what I started out with.
Thank you. Roll call.
Is this on the substitute?
Roll call on the substitution.
On the substitute.
On the substitution language. Counselor Noon?
Yes.
Counselor Rourke?
No.
Counselor Samaras?
Yes.
Counselor Chow?
Yes.
Counselor Conway?
Yes.
Counselor Drinkwater?
Yes.
Counselor Elliott?
No.
Mayor Leahy?
No.
Counselor Mercier?
No.
It's five on the substitution, now we have a roll call on the substitute motion. Was the motion a substitute? Put the word "review" in now, that's been allowed, the substitute, now we have on the underlying motion with the review language in there. Counselor Noon?
Yes.
Counselor Rourke?
No.
Counselor Samaras?
Yes.
Counselor Chow?
Yes.
Counselor Conway?
Yes.
Counselor Drinkwater?
Yes.
Counselor Elliott?
No.
Mayor Leahy?
No.
Counselor Mercier?
No.
Five yeas.
Thank you. Ten-three, Counselor Elliott. Request city council vote to prohibit the use of non-disclosure agreements regarding legal settlements. Seconded by Counselor Mercier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There's been a lot of discussion about non-disclosure agreements in recent late as a result of, I guess, a number of factors, cultural traits that seem to have take place. But I wanna ensure that no tax dollars, no tax dollars are being used to fund the silencing of any complaints, concealing any details relative to claims of sexual harassment or assault. I don't know if we have any in the city, I'd like to get a report of any, if that's the case. But to me, you know, these agreements allow perpetrators to move from one victim to the other, and if the victim does not want to make it public, I understand. But, and I also, I wanna applaud Senator Tizaglio, because she's been a relentless leader on this. So, I don't wanna belabor this issue. I know there's also another bill in the Senate that will ban the use of NDAs to share the complaint and identity of certain facts to be included in agreement, but again, only at the request of the complaint. So, you know, we look at cases like Harvey Weinstein and Win Resorts. You know, to me, there has been a cultural shift in the way victims are silenced. So, I feel strongly about this. I know other communities have banned the use of these, and I would like to see the city do the same, so... Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any discussion? Counselor Conway?
Yeah, thank you. Just very quickly, I think this is a great motion, and I certainly, I certainly will support it.
Thank you. Counselor Drinkwater?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also think this is a good motion, I wanna commend the maker of the motion, and I think there are really two considerations here, both the taxpayer, when there are potential agreements reached, non-disclosure agreements in the public sector, taxpayers should be aware of any settlements that are reached, but also victims. And I think victims need not be silenced completely if they wish to keep their names and identities private in these sorts of agreements. There's ways to protect the privacy of victims in these, but again, I think non-disclosure agreements overly silence them, and I think this is a good motion. Thanks.
Thank you. All those in favor, say aye. Motion passes. Second motion, ten-four, by Counselor Elliott. Request city manager provide an update regarding host community agreements along with the potential sources of revenue generated from them. Seconded by Counselor...
Second.
Counselor Noon, Counselor Elliott?
Motion speaks for itself. I know that the manager made some announcements, and I just wanted to have a cannabis control commission or committee meeting, and that we get this information and have the meeting just to let folks know the status of it and moving forward, so...
Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Last motion of the night, with six minutes left. Counselor Rourke, request city manager have Hull Street Engineering come to a neighborhood flood issues subcommittee to discuss purchase of the Lowell Hydro Plant.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Noon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Quickly, I know that the purchase was made a couple of weeks ago, and it finally went through, and I think it's be good for, I know Madam Manager is trying to reach out to them to have them come and speak. I know there are agreements that are in place that will remain in place as far as levels and so forth. So, I think, if we can get them to come to a neighborhood services or a flood subcommittee meeting, just, you know, to talk to their residents, I think it'd be a good move. Thank you.
We will certainly, sorry, sorry, Mr. Mayor. I don't wanna go past 10 o'clock, but we'll certainly reach out to them. We were contacted right before the transfer. At first, they thought some of the same personnel who worked for Anell and Lowell were going to stay. I don't think that's the case anymore, but we'll try and find out who is going to be here. But it is, based on that initial conversation was my understanding, that they are obviously taking, subject to agreements that Anell had, so... But we will, we'll reach out and try and make the introduction.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Announcements, Counselor Mercier?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make this quick before 10 o'clock. There's a comedy fundraiser featuring local, top local comedians for Lowell's 911/911 memorial fundraiser. Because there's no city council meeting next Tuesday, this'll be Friday, the 21st, so I'm saying it today, so people will kinda remember. It's Friday, the 21st, at Lenzies in Drakeett. Doors open at 6:30, but it starts at 7:30. Tickets are $20. It's to fund the 911 memorial. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other announcements?
Motion adjourned.
Don't forget, Friday is Valentine's for your special one, and we are adjourned.